Good evening and welcome to beautiful downtown Grand Forks. This is jobs development authority for Tuesday, September 7th, 2021. Welcome and roll call.
Weigel.
Here.
Dockler.
Here.
Weber.
Mock.
Here.
Cavami.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Vean.
Here.
Mayor Bocinski.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum.
Thank you.
Vean, I guess I'm not up here.
Item two, JDA action items. 2.1 Flex Pace and Gap Financing Request for North Dakota Coffee Ro- Rotary? Rochisery, Rotary.
Roastery.
Roastery.
But before that item, Chairman Mock, I would like to note that LM Wind Pi- Wind Power, excuse me.
I gave it to you, so.
Thank you. As you may recall, late last year, in conjunction with the lease renewal, the JDA approved project to expand canteen facilities for LM employees. We enjoyed a ribbon cutting ceremony this morning with staff and Mayor Bocinski was one of the scissor holders, so I'd like to give him an opportunity to talk about that.
Yeah, I thought it was great. Probably the best part about it was not only was that a place for staff to go and to be on their break, but they're also doing training in there. And probably the best sign was they had 10 new staff members that were going to be brand new, that were going through training. So, pretty exciting, and they're really happy. They think it'll help out on retention of employees. So, happy to be there. It looks like a bright future for them and a good space. So, thank you for all the members up here and making that happen.
LM's a wonderful corporate community member. We're happy to have them.
Well, thank you very much for the update.
Good evening, Chairman Mock, Mayor Bocinski, Members of Authority, T-Fund, Grand Forks Regional Economic Development Corporation. First project before you this evening is that of S. Olson Holdings and North Dakota Coffee Roastery, which really is an offshoot of Billy Brew Coffee Roasters and the vision and hard work of Sandy Luck and her partners who's here this evening. This is a, the action is to approve the loans described in the staff report and authorize the execution of appropriate documents by staff and the city attorney. North Dakota Coffee Roasters have expanded beyond the coffee shop, beyond Billy Brew Coffee, and they've had production and sales outside of North Dakota. They are now a certified primary sector company in North Dakota, so they are now, have now separated the entities from the retail storefront and the primary sector company. Primary sector company is North Dakota Coffee Roasteries, and they have, their brewing are creating a premium blend of, premium blend of coffee that they're selling outside the state, as I mentioned, and S. Olson Holdings and the real estate holding company for that entity. And they are expanding. They have been operating the Roastery out of their facility on South Washington Street. I think we're all familiar with that, and they are purchasing a facility on Heartland Business Corp. and acquiring equipment to grow the business. So, there are four loans associated with this activity, two pace loans that you're familiar with, and two loans that are associated with gap financing, one for the real estate and one for equipment, so I'll quickly walk through that. The overall project is $387,000, 10% equity from the company, just under $298,000 debt from Gate City Financing, and Growth Fund is being asked to provide just under $51,000 worth of gap financing. In terms of the pace loan, $33,000 to leverage the grants of $62,000 from the bank in North Dakota. The Flex Pace for Real Estate is asked to be deferred for 10 years per your policy and repayment to be made in 12 equal installments thereafter. Again, according to your policy, the Flex Pace loan for equipment has deferred for five years and to be paid in 12 installments, again, at 1%. The gap financing for real estate is a 120-month, 10-year loan at 2.44%, 75% of prime, which is, has been your policy for the former EDA revolving loan fund, which was de-federalized and contributed to the fit-up of the Tech Accelerator using Growth Fund resources to replicate that product. And gap financing for the equipment is 72, 72-month loans at 2.44%, secured by both lien on the property, mortgage on the property, and personal guarantee by Sandy Luck. Ms. Luck is here this evening, and I'm sure she'd be happy to answer any questions, as would I, and I'll stop, pause there for any questions you have of me.
Any initial questions? Let's open the public hearing, see if there's any. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back.
Move approval.
No motion to approve.
I'll second.
And a second. Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 2.2, Land Lease Request for SunDog Mining.
Thank you, Ms. Mock. As you may recall, earlier this spring, the JDA approved funding for SunDog mining to do a kind of a Bitcoin operation. This request is from SunDog for a land lease. They're requesting the opportunity to lease approximately 10,000 square feet within a much larger parcel of JDA-owned land. This is at the kind of the southern end of the industrial park, and as your, the city map shows, they're requesting a very small part of that large lot to use to house this hosting facility. The rent would be pretty insignificant in terms of revenue for the JDA at $1,200 a year for three years, but this would have pretty minimal impact on that site in terms of future development, and since the site is within the city limits, it would bring the opportunity for potential leasehold, real estate taxes, and franchise fees. This was discussed at Growth Fund Committee on the 23rd, and the recommendation was to concur, so I'd certainly stand for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Let's open the public hearing. Seeing no one, let's close the public hearing.
Move approval.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Further comments, questions? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Motion carries unanimously. Item 2.3, C-Run Loan Request, Integrity Fundraisers. Good evening.
Good evening, JDA President Mock, Members of the Authority. We have one C-Run loan request before you from Integrity Fundraisers LLC, owned by Scott Reinhardt and Scott Kildee. The business was started in 2006, and the current LLC was founded in 2012. They primarily sell coupon books for schools and organizations to fundraise in the community. As far as their COVID-19 impact, there was a loss in revenue associated with schools going virtual or hybrid. Activities were limited in schools and fundraisers were largely canceled. Businesses, and the business was already somewhat seasonal in nature, focusing on the school year, and so cash flow has been constrained. As far as the recovery plan goes, they have launched an online fundraising tools, such as Online Coupon Book. You can also buy products through their online store. They have custom product engraving as well, which was launched during the pandemic or around that time. The funds are planned to be used for three to six months of working capital needs or until those paid, or those invoices from the fall semester are paid. As far as our review goes, we review collateral, debt coverage, management, business history, personal credit, and debt to equity. We also look at the COVID impact, other assistance received, circumstances, and their overall approach to recovery. They have no previous loans, the city or the JDA has no previous loans with the company. We're recommending a working capital loan of up to $95,000 at 1% interest with a 12-month deferral amortized over 60 months and a blanket UCC lien. Personal guaranteed will also be required by both co-owners. And that personal guarantee is determined by the collateral available, their debt coverage ratio, age of the business, and some other risk factors. With that, I will stand for any questions regarding the loan request.
Thank you. Any questions?
President Mock, also, both owners are here this evening. If you have any questions for the owners as well, so they agree to make themselves available.
Let's open the public hearing. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Are there questions?
Move approval.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Questions, comments? Mr. Hanson, too. Did we have a limit for when we were supposed to spend the C-Run dollars that we received?
Yes, so our first deadline is coming up on November 1st, and that is to expend 25% of our revolving loan fund capital.
Okay.
So far, we're at about 65% of expending that capital. Our next check-in is April 1st, at which we need to have 75% of that spent.
Okay.
If this loan is approved tonight, we'll be at about 70% dispersed, so we're well ahead of our deadlines with the EDA.
Okay. And those were federal funds that we're dispersing out?
Yeah.
And then you can put them into other programs when they come back?
Yes, so this RLF was fully capitalized by the federal government. There was no local match required, and so when these funds begin to revolve back in, this will replace the EDA RLF gap financing tool that we recently de-federalized to support the Herald Building. So, it's kind of a convenient time in that when we de-federalized one RLF and can use that money to support the fit-up of the accelerator, we have this new RLF that'll soon take its place, and we'll start seeing funds revolve back in starting in January.
Okay. Thank you. All right, seeing no more comments. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same side? Motion carries unanimously, I think. Item 2.4, Accelerate Loan Request, Safety Spec.
Chairman Mock, very pleased to bring you our second Accelerate Loan Program application of Safety Spec Incorporated. The request before you this evening is to approve the loan, subject to the terms that we'll summarize, and to authorize city staff and city attorney to execute appropriate documents. Before I begin, I'd like to introduce folks on the screen here with Safety Spec and supporting Safety Spec. Mr. Ken Barton is here, is our CEO. Tom Burke, Chief Financial Officer. Dr. Firtash Vasefi is our Chief Technology Officer, and those are the representatives from Safety Spec. And then Mr. Richard Glenn, Executive Director of North Dakota Bios here this evening, and really was the first individual and organization to make connection with Safety Spec that I'm aware of and really present the opportunity to the community. Safety Spec is a, was formed to develop and commercialize advanced optical sensing technology for surface hygiene and food quality testing. Specifically, they have been working and validating their technology through research collaborations with the USDA and US Army Research Laboratories, and they started with the research to inspect kitchen facilities and safeguard soldiers in the field from foreign contaminations. They have exclusively licensed and patented, exclusively licensed as patent technology and have exclusive rights to deploy. They have demonstrated the technology viability through their work with USDA and, and the US Army, and they've demonstrated market acceptance to the sale of their product. They have a viable, a minimum viable product at the moment and are working on their subsequent product offerings. The company has moved its headquarters and moved to Grand Forks, North Dakota, from California, and they plan to hire 12 additional employees in North Dakota. They have two currently with a payroll of over $700,000, annual payroll of $700,000. Also importantly, have a very strong partnership with the University of North Dakota, specifically with the UND Biomedical Engineering Department that's working on this and future technology that they will deploy. The project was, and Mr. Barton and team presented to the EDC Board of Directors, very encouraged and intrigued by the opportunity. It was reviewed by the Growth Committee Accelerate Loan Program Committee on two separate occasions. A few members here this evening that may be able to speak to some of their deliberations. Ultimately, and then the Growth Fund recently ultimately recommended to bring forward to this group. The Accelerate Loan Program has pre, I guess, defined parameters. Mr. Barton and team have offered terms that are slightly better than what our program offering are because of, they'd like some consistency with their existing investor base. They're currently raising up to $5 million worth of equity funding in sort of pre-equity types of investment. To summarize those terms, it's a $250,000 loan. It would be a two-year term at 6%. Our Growth Fund policy was five years, 3% no interest for three years and 2% interest for the following two, so this is an enhancement. It would be a convertible note with the Growth Fund having the discretion to convert so they, if they so choose within their two-year timeframe, and they would again carry the 20% discount of any equity event in the future. Be happy to share information if you have specific questions. I'm sure committee members would be happy to share sort of their engagement as well, as well as Mr. Barton and team is online, should you have questions for their team as well.
Thank you. Any questions initially? Mr. Cavami?
Yeah, just want to chime in from a Growth Fund perspective, committee member. You know, this company had some really amazing qualities and qualifications that I want to bring to light. One, you know, one of the big ones for me was over a million dollars in funds secured federally and from the state. DARPA contracts and federal contracts, and these are all things that I think would be huge for Grand Forks. Having them relocate, I think it's just a win for everybody, so for us to offer something that we would offer to a lot of different companies willing to relocate, plus they bring the security of the federal grants, the state grants, I think it's a game changer. And if they are even halfway on their upside of their projections, I think this is a huge opportunity for Grand Forks. Thank you for considering Grand Forks.
Thank you. I will open the public hearing. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for either motions or for the comments.
Motion approval.
Okay, we have a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
And a second.
Hi, can I, Ms. Mock, please? I just wanted to thank Mr. Barton, Mr. Vasefi, and Mr. Burke. I was, actually, you know what? I want to thank you guys for coming to Grand Forks. I also want to thank Mr. Richard Glenn. You look sharp tonight, sir. You brought, you brought this company into, into my office over a year ago, and I think you're a big part of what landed them in Grand Forks, and pretty excited, really enjoyed multiple meetings with this group, and just really thank you guys for considering Grand Forks. And the product that you're doing, you know, it's, the timing couldn't be any better, and it's, it's going to help a lot of people, so thank you for your work on that as well.
Thank you. Seeing no more comments, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Thank you, if you wanted to say so.
Oh, did, do you have comments?
Thank you very much. We just want to thank the Biocience Association of North Dakota and Department of Agriculture for all the help that they've given us with our company. We appreciate working in Grand Forks, and we appreciate working with the, with the folks there. It's been nothing but a pleasure.
Well, thank you very much.
I'll move to adjourn.
And we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A call to order, the Grand Forks City Council Meeting, Tuesday, September 7th, 2021. Could we get a roll call, please, Marine?
Weigel.
Here.
Dockler.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Mock.
Here.
Cavami.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Vean.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. 1.2, Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) certified in the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, 1.3, Mayor's Announcements. We do have a number of announcements, considering we, I think it's been three weeks since the council meeting, so. Hope everybody had a good Labor Day weekend and was able to unwind a little bit. First wanted to give out our condolences to the family of Joe Peturka. He just, he recently passed away. 30-year police officer with the Grand Forks Police Department, so our thoughts and prayers are with his family. We made a few trips recently to represent and advocate for the city, advocate for the city. One of the exciting ones was going down to Atlanta a couple of weeks ago. Airtony, a local homegrown business and company which is doing quite well, is a finalist in a national competition called Genius New York, so they became one of the five finalists. The big announcement was down at the Association for Unmanned Vehicle Systems International Conference, so I got to go down there, be a part of that, along with the private sector, the EDC. We had a lot of UND representation. It's fair to say that the Grand Forks community was represented really well there, and, you know, happy to see the Airtony making that move, and hopefully in the coming months, we'll find out if they end up number one and take the top spot on that. Went to Chicago last week, and we're fortunately looking like we're moving forward and have some, some good groundwork finally done and moving forward on the Columbia Mall. I think people have been wanting something to happen there for a long time, and it's, it's not going to be quite your traditional mall, but hopefully we'll have an announcement coming up in the near future, and we've got the ball rolling again on that, so that was pretty exciting. And then last week, I was out in Jamestown, visiting with Mayor Tim Mahoney and Mayor Dardis down there in West Fargo, along with the Red River Valley Water Supply Group and the Garrison Diversion Group. Probably one good thing about the trip is it rained heavily both directions, so that was nice to see. But definitely try and move that project forward. That would be just crippling the human cost and the cost of industry if we can't have the Red River flowing. I think it's been since the 1880s since we were really in trouble with that, again in the 30s and in the 80s, but we need a long-term solution for the city of Grand Forks there, so I was happy to be out there representing us. Probably the biggest news, I want to thank Senator Hoven and Senator Kramer for their, their work in that recent announcement with the Air Force Base. We've been fighting a long time, missions that have come and gone. This is a, this is something that's really going to, it's going to cement the ISR dominance of Grand Forks, and it leads to our magnet in the, in the UAS field, and this is a generational win, and it's going to keep that Air Force Base here in Grand Forks and growing for the next 40, 50, 60, 100 years, hopefully. Just last week as well, we had the Mayor's Choice Award on, from the Public Arts Commission. I want to thank Todd Herbert, another UND professor, for his exhibit, Ice Bubble and Snowmen. So, if you get a chance to look around, you'll see some art hanging up on the second floor there and also on the main floor, so if you see something you like, I think you can let them know. A lot of it's available for, for sale still, so go ahead and take a look at that. Oh geez, we got a lot of them here. Last week, I did, I was pretty excited, I got to go out to the fire department, invited me out to the Public Safety Center, got to put on my, my fireman's hat cap for the day and get to see what, what hard work and training that those guys, guys and gals do every day out there. I got a chance to do rappelling off the tower. I did vehicle extraction with the, the Spreader. It's not called the Jazz of Life, that's a brand. I learned that, it's called the Spreader, so I got to get my hands on that and pop some doors open. Then I got fit tested for a mask and actually got to go on, on a lead hose on one of the live fires, so it was pretty exciting. And they're going to have an open house coming up, so it's kind of leading to that, coming up this weekend from, it'll be Saturday from 9:00 to noon. And then once you get done going to that open house, the Veterans Memorial Dedication Ceremony, for anybody that hasn't checked that out already, please get out there to that event. That's going to start at 2:00 PM. We'll have some buses running to and from the Columbia Mall, and I know PD's going to be out there running, doing traffic, but it's a long time coming, and a lot of people worked really hard on that project, so I'm excited to see that dedication. And lastly, if anyone read the newspaper, we've got a lot of events coming up, pretty exciting. We start with the Greenway Takeover, foreigners playing at the Alara Center. What else do we got? It's, it's a busy week, and it's great to see a lot of these community events coming back and a lot of them outdoor, and people being able to get out and do things. I think that's all I got for comments. So, with that, quite the, quite the amount today, we'll move on to awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations.
2.1, Proclamation, National Assisted Living Week, September 12th through the 18th, 2021.
I guess I'll go right into that, then. We got National Assisted Living Week, so here's the proclamation, September 12th to the 18th, 2021, Compassion, Compassion, Community, and Caring. So, whereas the number of elderly and disabled Americans is dramatically increasing, whereas assisted living is a long-term care service that fosters choice, independence, and autonomy in our elderly nationwide, whereas the National Center for Assisted Living proudly created the National Assisted Living Week, whereas the theme of National Assisted Living Week 2021, Compassion, Community, Caring, highlights the opportunity to bestow on our residents a multitude of events and activities that show them how much we care and love, care for them and love them. Now, therefore, Brandon Bocinski, Mayor of Grand Forks, North Dakota, proclaimed the week of September 12th to the 18th, 2021 as National Assisted Living Week in Grand Forks, North Dakota. I urge all citizens to visit friends and loved ones who reside at these facilities and also to learn more about assisted living services and how they benefit our communities. National Assisted Living Week. Thank you.
And 2.2 is the 2021 Transportation Infrastructure Projects Update.
Mr. Grasser, now it's your turn, your turn to talk for 20 minutes straight.
I don't think it'll take that long, but thank you, Mayor Bocinski, Members of City Council. If I can get this thing rolling here quick. We're going to talk about, appreciate the opportunity to get, come in here and talk about the transportation. This is just a summary of some of the 2021 projects. This is really transportation-oriented. The department did a lot of other projects besides just those that are really on the transportation side, so you're invited to take a look at the website. City website has a, a map of a more encompassing amount of projects that, that are being done in 2021. So, we'll start out here. The first one out of the gate is Box Culvert and Paving on 44th Avenue South. It's kind of out of the normal limelight and routing, so it's a project that a lot of people maybe aren't really aware of, but this is Washington Street over here. This area, I'm going to say, is kind of that Edgewood Development infill area that we've, we've been working on with for the last couple of years. If you remember, long-term planning, we installed a, a traffic signal here on 44th with the idea that it was justified by connecting this development to the west over to Washington. So, this is basically the last piece that, that makes that thing operational, so that's, work is complete, it's open to the public. Contractor was RJ Zaverell and Sons, about $610,000 project. Next one we'll talk about here is 24th Avenue South CPR and Grind, that's Concrete Panel Repair and Grinding Project. There's about a mile and a half worth of work there between Washington and 42nd Street. It's not contiguous. You'll see on the map there, there's a couple of breaks in there that were, we just separated out for cost reasons. Contractor here was op-construction, $984,000, and that project is open to the public at this point. Belmont Road Reconstruction. If you see on the map here, we did divide the work this year into two phases, and that's basically just be able to provide access to the residents in there, although if the stretch gets too long, it's too hard to get people in and out of their homes, that type of thing. This project isn't scheduled to be completed until about the, the end of October. This contractor on here is op-construction, the contract, contract cost there is $1.64 Curry's 11th Edition is, is another one of the projects. There's a segment of residential street over here, David Drive, and then the bigger component from our transportation system perspective is connection of Cherry Street down here to 62nd Avenue South. That project is estimated to be completed by the end of October. Contractor is RJ Zaverells and Sons, $2.56 million. Oscarville, we've had a lot of discussions about that. That work is ongoing. At this point in time, there isn't any paving down, but, but they will have some down by mid-October. This is a 2022 completion project, so they're, they're fine shape relative to the schedule at this point in time. Contractors, Stratocorporation, $3.89 million project. Asphalt Mill and Overlay, there's a large, a number of segments in town that had asphalt mill and overlay on it. You see a listing of them there. One thing I really wanted to point out is the graniteoid agreement. Ed Lieberman, our Assistant City Engineer, worked very, very closely, spearheaded this thing, basically updating the graniteoid agreement. And what this means is, is that we came to a agreement with the State Historical Society focusing on preserving those pieces of granite, sections of graniteoid streets that are basically in good enough shape to be saved, and a lot of the other ones that basically didn't have historical value, those have been removed from the list. That allowed us to work on South Fifth Street, which was a very, very rough street, and we, so we did a mill and overlay on South Fifth Street as a result of, of that general agreement. That work is essentially done, minor work, just seeding and burn repair. Contractor was Stratocorporation, $1.26 million. Traffic Signal Installation, there were two of those that we worked on this year. One is on South Washington and 36th Avenue South. Mack Construction was a contractor on that, $786,000. The other is located on 47th Avenue South at 20th Street. This was to a large part driven by safety project for the school and pedestrians. Stratocorporation is contractor on that, $427,000. The work out on both of these projects is essentially done, with the exception of the signal poles themselves. Due to the long delivery dates on those, those won't be coming in until about December or January, so we'll be back on those projects again. But in the meantime, the construction signage is down, it's open to the public. But in the meantime, the construction signage is down, it's open to the public for use. North Third Street Reconstruction, this has got some federal dollars associated with it through the Urban Grants Program. Couple of phases on this thing, it's coming along nicely, completion date is mid-October. Contractor here again is Op Construction, $3.08 million for that project. North Columbia Road Reconstruction, again, this has got federal dollars attached to it. This one had a couple of phases, the contractor is behind on both phases. The original completion date on the project was mid-August, they are under liquidated damages at this point in time. Unfortunately, I don't have a date or anything I can give you that I've got much degree of confidence in, but they're moving along. Paving is, they keep plugging away. Contractor there is KPH, it's a $5.39 million project. 32nd Avenue South Turn Lanes, again, this has got federal participation in it, remember we were aligning turn lanes and adding handicap ramps and all kinds of other things. Again, total traffic signal replacement. I don't have a picture of it, in hindsight I wish I'd have grabbed one, but I don't know if people were traveling down 32nd Avenue South during the time of construction when they had the old poles up and they had the new poles up. It's a difference between a pole like this and a pole like that. You know, the new standard, I still call them new, they've probably been in place for 15 years now, but the standards of structural integrity of the poles have changed a lot. And so anyway, it's pretty, you don't really see it so much until you see them side by side. If anybody wants to see, we do have some pictures even though you can't see them right now, so. That project is winding down, you're going to actually see the traffic control and stuff coming off the road. If not day by day, certainly week by week, the project is scheduled for completion in mid-October. Tyzac is a contractor and that was a $5.57 million project. Bike Path Improvements, we just kind of did a catch-all on here. South Columbia Road, we put in some new bike paths down there that had some federal dollars attached to it, about half a mile, Op Construction was a contractor, $267,000. Father South on Columbia Road on some of the previously installed asphalt, we did almost a mile's worth of overlay and repair on that. Tager Contracting was a contractor on that for $60,000. We also did some work in the Greenway, little over a mile's worth of asphalt overlay. That particular one was constructed by Stratocorporation, $907,000. Then kind of some miscellaneous catch-all items, there's a short segment of 27th Avenue South, it hasn't yet to be started yet, that's going to go to reconstruction. Even though it's a late start, it should be done by about the middle of October, there's just not a lot of work to do there. Op Construction is a contractor on that, $137,000 project. Yardway Site, right down here on Fifth Avenue, that's getting wrapped up, mid-September completion date, Tony Anderson was contractor on that, $321,000. That'd be nice to get that open for delivery of trees and limbs and things like that. Sidewalk Stuff Items, we've got sidewalks and ADA ramps, Tony Anderson Construction on that, $437,000. And we did a fair amount of subdivision repair, the idea is we're trying to take the good subdivisions that have been done in the last number of years, keep them in good shape. So we invested, Op Construction did that work, we invested $341,000 in that. And then some public building, concrete paving repair, Op Construction on that, $132,000. That's some of the work at PSAP and some of those have come through years, changed orders lately. So with that, that's the end of the transportation items, I can stand for any questions if there are any.
Thank you, there's a lot going on, it's pretty exciting. A lot of the infrastructure projects are getting done and the weather's helped. I did notice Mr. Weber seemed to perk up on one slide more than any others and that tended to be the bike path slide, but one quick question for you on liquidated damages on that Columbia Road, what would KPH be paying back right now on that per day?
Ooh, I'd have to kick that back on an email, there's a schedule and I don't know, it's a daily, daily amount. It's going to be pretty substantial because they've been, they've been off, you know, it's almost a month already and they're not ready to open things up yet, so that'll be substantial. It'll be in the tens of thousands of dollars.
All right, council, any further questions, Mr. Weigle?
Just a quick question, Mr. Grasser, is that something that we can use in the future when selecting companies? If there's a company that is better at maintaining a schedule that may happen to be local, using them instead of a company that's from out of town?
I have to be careful with my attorney hat, but I don't believe a local consideration that's come up in the past and I know we've been advised that that's not really a selection criteria per, directly per se. I think poor performance is definitely an item that can be used to evaluate the best bid because we award not on the lowest, but we lower the best bid. The problem you run into sometimes, KPH is a good example, they actually did some work, they were the contractor that did a lot of the work on Washington Street here a couple of years ago on the ADA ramps, and I tell you what, we were very impressed, they banged those down the street, minimal disruption, rapid, so they've, they did a very good job on some projects. This one, for whatever reason, just has seemed to work out very well for them. That's the problem with trying to, they're not always, always bad.
Do we have a reason why it didn't work out for them though? I mean, we're sitting in September and it was supposed to be done, how long ago now?
Yep. There's lots of discussions about a number of things, you know, when you got a multiple subcontractors involved, they had Underground, they had to move Storm sewer, they had to actually do some of the Forest Main, there's also some Forest Main relocation associated with that, that was different than what we did earlier on for the memorial building. So there's a number of things that would have impacted the schedule. I don't know, you can point to any one thing in specific. It's not like there was a shortage of cement that they couldn't get, you know, ready mixed and it was, you know, it was just a culmination, I think, of a number of things.
President Sandy?
I think, thank you, Mr. Grasser, good presentation. I think with the sheer magnitude of the projects that we're doing, it's really amazing that we only have one project behind, so I'm pretty impressed. I think you'll notice when Mr. Grasser is going through the lists of the contractors that are doing this, I'm recognizing newer companies and more newer companies that we're seeing names of people that are coming from out of town, simply because we're in a very fortunate position that we have resources to be tackling a significant amount of road construction projects. So hopefully we don't put ourselves into a perpetual state of driving in circles, which I seem to be around the Columbia Road area every time I get stuck in that juggernaut, but if we get lucky, we can get, knock off a bunch of these big projects in the next two, three years and then hopefully it's just maintenance. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Grasser, appreciate it.
I just have one, Al didn't want to do this last, he gets nervous on quality of life projects. On, just on that Yardway Site, we are going to put a fence up, I know Council President Sandy, you mentioned fencing that, the fencing probably won't get done until next spring, so we'll open the site and get the fencing done first thing in the spring of next year. Just wanted to point out a few projects. Mayor Bochensky mentioned the Veterans Memorial Park, I just want to highlight the fact of, you know, this was a 10-year project that is finally being completed, going to have a grand opening here on September 11th, here on Saturday. And really, what I'm really proud of is the city of Grand Forks really stepped up near the end of this project and our friends at the, at the Park District. I think if you look at the cash and in-kind, this is millions of dollars of investment that's been made. I just want to highlight the fact that the Al Palmer Visitor Center was completed with a lot of help from the city of Grand Forks and a lot of help from Mark Walker of our engineering department, really helped along, along with Webster Foster Weston and Mr. Bergman, Bergum from WFW did a lot of work on that. So just to highlight that, that was a $436,000 investment and there was some in-kind support on that. We dedicated $150,000, the Park District dedicated $36,000 and thanks to Ken and his support on Garrison Diversion, they invested $100,000 in there, so there were a lot of support on that particular project that I wanted to highlight. The other project is the Skate Park and I think we should really be proud of Council Vice President Mock and her entire neighborhood and Mr. Weber will count you too because you're in the neighborhood, is that you didn't succumb to the "not in my backyard" for a skate park. And not only has Phase 1 been really exceptional, we've even gotten to Phase 2 and really the Park District has helped lead that, but again, it took a city contribution. I talked to the Park District today, they're going to have a kind of a grand opening on September 18th from noon to 2:00. They're going to, more details to come, but that's what they're planning right now. That second phase is about a 350 to $400,000 investment. We used about $100,000 from our CDBG funds to help make that happen. And I just want to highlight some other investors in that, again, Garrison Diversion helped make up some difference. The Inglessted Foundation, Hugo's and the Joe Neal gift through that Park District Foundation, that got that park, that second phase over there, and if you drive out there, it's really impressive and it's really great to see on weekends, it's really full. And thank you to the neighborhood for thinking the best in families and kids that they'll do the right things and it's really been a huge success, so I want to point out that. The final one is the Hugo's Raceway, which is probably the nearest turn lane. We're wrapped, our investment in this particular project is a little over $120,000. I think we wanted to make sure that that really was represented well on our city property, really represented well from the Alara Center. I think if you drive out there, it's really quite exceptional, it's so exceptional. Hugo's is the sponsor of that facility, the, so now we're calling it the Hugo's Raceway and they've dedicated $250,000 to that particular facility. So I think a really great investment that we were able to drive. What we did as part of our $120,000 investment, we used various contracts that we had out from asphalt to electrical to clay and we incorporated those into already bid city projects, so many of the projects that you saw tonight, from Al Grasser, from Gowan to Op to NOTAC to RBB, United Crane, we integrated those and they gave us really competitive change orders as part of those projects so that we could get this facility up and going in June. So again, I want to say thank you for allowing us to invest in some infrastructure in this vein and got it, got it moving forward. Probably the last project we should probably highlight and put it on here is, but you know, to some concern with is the public art that's out by the Alara Center too. Again, that was another city infrastructure investment, about $80,000. So just want to point out all the things that you guys do at city council that doesn't pay for everything, but really gets a lot of these projects across the board. And Mayor, you mentioned, we've got probably some bigger projects coming where you, from a Career Impact Academy to turf and court facilities, aquatic centers, we've had a lot of discussions about Seaquest, those are all going to involve the city's leadership and city's investment and I think these are a really great example, probably smaller scale. I think we're going to have more projects come through here in the next few years that are going to be larger scale, they're really going to move the needle not only in quality of life, but economic development, so I want to highlight these examples that I think are really terrific for everyone in the community.
Thank you, Mr. Feen. I think a nice thing to point out too is the city's contribution was probably mashed by private funds three times to many more than three times on a lot of these projects and hopefully it'll continue. I know even Ms. Doppler sent one today that council's going to be looking at in childcare, but things that can push, push things over the hump to get them done is great, so thank you, Mr. Feen. Any comments from council, questions from Mr. Feen? All right, thank you.
2.3 is the COVID update.
All right, are we starting, we got Ms. Compton, please.
Good evening, Mayor Bochensky, President Sandy and members of council. So I think that there are a number of people here too, or at least a couple of us, to share an update as it relates to where we're at in our fight against COVID, but I just wanted to start with some updates as it relates to what we're doing at All True and what we're seeing both on the inpatient side as well as the outpatient side and our focus on both testing and vaccinations. I'll start with the inpatient side. We currently have nine inpatients staying with us, three of those nine are in critical care. And really when we've been looking at those numbers, we saw one to two averaging, one to two patients all summer. We crept up to 14 last Friday and are now holding steady and hope to continue to hold steady at nine or less. When we started to look at the data that we've had since the vaccine has been readily available starting in about February and taking that data, have determined that 89% of the people that are coming in to stay in the hospital are those that are not fully vaccinated, which supports the work that we're continuing to do in partnership with the city and public health to try to get more and more people vaccinated. The age range of those that we're seeing now looks different than what we had seen in what I consider round one. The age range that we're looking at now is anywhere between the ages of 23 and 95 with the median at 60. We're at orange status for our inpatient capacity and really starting to ask nurses to consider coming out of the outpatient work that they're doing to support the inpatient work that's happening in the hospital. Unlike what we saw last fall where those numbers came up in COVID inpatient numbers, we also saw a drop in the med surge where what kinds of patients we are seeing outside of just those COVID patients, we saw a drop. We're not seeing that this time, so those numbers are staying up while the, while the COVID numbers come up at the same time. So I'm going to shift gears to the outpatient work that's happening now. And as you all probably remember, about a year ago, we partnered with the city to take a look at what we could do to offer curbside testing. We were testing patients at our FMR location on campus, which was causing traffic jams and some challenges for our nurses who were starting to face some cold weather. So we've recently put up a tent on the west side of our south campus, so the road work that we were shown earlier on the map on that 44th Avenue, just west of Washington, if you take that road west past the backside of our south campus location, there's a big parking lot there that allows for plenty of space for people to be vaccinated, or excuse me, to be tested. Today was the first day, I stepped out there at about 2:00 today and we had about 50 people that had already called the hotline to be tested at that location, which I think is going to do a number of things. One, it gives us an opportunity to get people tested quickly and then get them some answers as quickly as we can. Right now that turnaround time is roughly 24 hours or less, patients that are coming in the morning, we're seeing patients in our express locations are getting those results by later afternoon or early evening. So the benefit of that is that we have also seen a significant increase in our express clinic locations. So we have three of those locations, two of them in Grand Forks, one at our south campus, one at FMR on university, on the university's campus, and one in East Grand Forks. Throughout the summer, we were seeing really anywhere between 20, 30 and started to creep up towards 50 patients a day, which would be a high volume in an express location for us, at least historically. We're running closer to 100 patients a day now and of those, I had some information pulled in about somewhere between 55 to 75% of the patients coming into those express clinics today are coming in with COVID-like symptoms. And so by having a COVID drive-through location or a test set up, we can really limit the volume that's coming into the express clinic to those who maybe have conditions that would require them to be seen by a provider, but those that just want, you know, want to know what their test results might be, we can send them through the drive-up. In addition to that, we've created, we've reopened our nurse line, it never really went away, but it was seeing somewhere between 10 to 20 calls a day. It's ramped up, last Saturday it took 185 calls, Sunday 113 and then Monday 164. So we're seeing a pretty significant increase in people calling with questions related to COVID, not only with symptoms, but wanting to better understand where they can be tested. As it relates to where we're at with vaccines, we've seen those numbers double, so we were seeing roughly 20 people a day coming into each one of our express locations to be vaccinated. It's closer to 40 at each one of the locations in Grand Forks. When we factor in our regional clinics, we're vaccinating about 200 people a day, which is great. The biggest increase has come in our OBJYN population since the Pfizer vaccine has been approved. So those are all the good things that are happening. We are starting to ramp up the infusion therapy. We are starting to ramp up the infusion therapy offered in an effort to try to catch it early, treat people when they need to be treated, and work to trying to keep them out of the hospital the best that we can. I think our biggest concern at this point is the staffing available to take both the med surge patients that we're seeing and the increase. And I think Mr. Dulitz will talk more about that, the spike or the surge that we're anticipating will come. One of the most important things that, you know, we continue to share with our patients is the more people we can get vaccinated, the more people we can keep out of the hospital. And the numbers that I shared tonight really express that and really speak volumes about those that are coming into the hospital and are sicker. We recognize that it's not stopping everyone from getting COVID, but it certainly is making a difference in how sick those patients are getting. So I will stop there and answer any questions if you have any. Otherwise, I might turn it over to Todd or Mr. Dulitz as it relates to any additional updates.
Questions or comments from Ms. Compton?
A quick comment, if I may, Mr. Mayor. Looking at the local health dashboard, the only category that's in the green, in fact, the only one that's not red or orange, is testing. And so thanks for your All True's leadership on that. That's an important part of fighting these things.
Thank you. Appreciate those comments.
Mayor Bochensky, members of the Council, I'm Michael Dulitz with Grand Forks Public Health to do an update on our COVID dashboard. So looking at our COVID dashboard for today, we are at about 35.7 cases per 100,000 for daily average. So we're averaging between 20 and 25 cases per day. The cases seem to roll in mostly during the week, and then on the weekends, there's a pretty big drop-off in the number of cases that do get reported out. So that kind of brings out the average. For today, we're at about 48 cases, for instance, whereas over the weekend, there were just a handful of cases reported. As you mentioned, we're doing really well on testing, which is keeping our percent positivity at a relatively reasonable rate. And our hospital capacity is keeping our score up solidly in that orange category as well. So we are overall in an orange. What would move us into red would be a change in hospital capacity into the red category or an increase in the percent positivity above 10%. Looking at a week in review, you can see over the past four weeks, we've had a pretty substantial increase in the number of new cases, the number of tests. But fortunately, we've also been seeing an increase in the number of vaccines over the past four weeks, especially when you compare that back into the July timeframe. Looking at a heat map of where our cases are at, what age groups they're in, the biggest concern that we're seeing right now is an increase in cases in the 10 to 19 age group, which seems to be a county-wide concern. And then, to a lesser degree, we still see a lot of case burden in the 20 to 29 age group. But really, it is kind of all around, except for in the older population. We've seen relatively good protection in the older population related to the high vaccine rate in the elderly. Comparing Grand Forks to other communities throughout the state, Grand Forks still is at the bottom when we compare ourselves to our peer communities. One spot that I see a little bit of hope in is that it looks like Ward County has leveled out a little bit in their case rate, and that has also carried out into their hospitalization rate as well, whereas we are still seeing some concern with the increase in case rate continuing in the Bismarck area. Comparing our case rates year over year, we're at roughly the same spot as we were last year with the increases in cases. We didn't see the outbreak with the start of school like we saw last year, but otherwise, we still have kind of a residual caseload similar to where we were at in September of last year. Comparing that to hospitalizations, overall, the number of hospitalizations for Grand Forks County residents themselves is relatively low. Just bear in mind that, you know, as a healthcare system, All True is a tertiary care center, so they, you know, they have a wide catchment area where they do see patients from. We're still relatively low, but that number did rise a fair amount in the past week and isn't too far off from where we were at the beginning of the outbreak last year. Looking at active hospitalizations in comparison to other communities throughout the state, Grand Forks is still relatively low when we compare to our peer communities. Again, Ward County has leveled out fairly well, so that does give us, you know, some potential hope that, you know, maybe there's a chance that things could be leveling. But Burley Morton in the Bismarck area does provide some concerns since they did have such an increase in overall hospitalizations. Moving on to vaccinations, we are at about 46.6% of the community that has, is considered to be fully vaccinated. One good thing that we have seen in the, over the past month or so, is that that gap between the people fully vaccinated and partially vaccinated has been increasing. That means that people are coming out to get vaccinated. And so we are seeing some positive movement. The Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, due to some supply constraints, is not widely available. So what a lot of people are getting is the Pfizer vaccine and some Moderna. And so there is that 21-day period before someone gets fully vaccinated. We are at less than 7,000 people that we still need to get to that 60% of our original goal for presumption of herd immunity. Unfortunately, that may not give us the presumptive herd immunity that we're looking for right now with the Delta variant having such a higher, such a higher ability to spread. Another area where we recently gained access to data on is looking at the age groups of the individuals who are vaccinated. So the two age groups of primary concern for Grand Forks County and are lowest are the 12 to 18 age group and the 19 to 29 age group. A positive that we have seen is the 12 to 18 age group. And 12 to 17 age group has seen a pretty significant jump in the vaccination rate in that age group over the course of a little over a month. There was a 14 percentage point increase in that age group. So we are seeing a lot of people coming out to get vaccinated. But the 19 to 29 age group is some cause for concern, given the relatively low vaccine rate. Grand Forks County, a majority of our, the largest age group in our county, tenure age group in our county, is the 20 to 29 age group. And a lot of those individuals are college-age individuals who may or may not have been vaccinated in Grand Forks County. So we weren't quite sure how to interpret that data. When we look at it, though, and compare it to the overall rate for North Dakota, it isn't too far off. So there might be some confidence that that may be a true rate for Grand Forks County overall for that 19 to 29 age group, and that would be a place for improvement. Looking at the other age groups, one positive that we are seeing is the 30 to 60 age group, which has been an age group of concern. We weren't sure if people were coming out to get vaccinated really well. We actually had a pretty good turnout in Grand Forks County with a vaccine rate above 60% in all of the age categories between 30 and 60. Again, we have a lot of our population, the 19 to 29 age group, which brings down that overall number. And we have seen a good, we have seen a good turnout from the 12 to 18 age group. When we compare that to the state of North Dakota, you can see that our performance in that 30 to 60 age group makes a lot more sense compared to those other groups. We're consistently higher, particularly in the 30 to 39 age group. And then comparing to the rest of the state, we're kind of second to Cass County in the 40 to 50, 40 to 60 age groups. But otherwise, the Ward County area has been consistently lower in their overall age group, or overall vaccination in most age groups. So looking at our bottom line, we're seeing a continued increase in COVID vaccination, which is a positive. We're glad that people are coming out to get vaccinated. We just wish it would have been a little bit sooner. We're seeing a higher-than-expected vaccine rate in that 30-plus age group, which means that people are coming out to get vaccinated. Weaknesses, the continued high case incidence in Grand Forks County and the continued, you know, the continued number of cases that we're seeing is a sign of concern, particularly the case burden in the 10 to 19 age group. And we are seeing a slight increase in hospitalizations. We hope to continue providing vaccines and continue our vaccination efforts. Right now, Grand Forks is continuing, Grand Forks Public Health is continuing our vaccine opportunities at our Hugo's location, which has had a really good turnout. And then finally, our threats with the sustained increases in hospitalizations in the other parts of the state, we aren't quite sure when our peak is going to be. Fortunately, the city of Grand Forks and Grand Forks County has generally had a lower case rate and hospitalization burden compared to our peer communities. And we have the low vaccination rate in that 12 to 18 age group and 19 to 29 age group, and we have the data to back that up. So hopefully, we can turn that data into action. And then one final threat that I didn't get a chance to add on here is breakthrough cases. Statewide, right now, we're seeing breakthrough cases make up between about 15 and 25% of our overall cases. Generally, it's about a, if you're vaccinated, or if you're unvaccinated, you're at about a three times higher risk, based off of my interpretation of the data of getting COVID. If you're vaccinated, your chances of getting COVID are much lower. But again, the increase in the breakthrough cases is certainly a sign of concern, and that is publicly available data. With that, I am open to any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Dulitz. I just want to say, Public Health did a great job over the summer in that plan to have 95%, was that right, of the city's population within walking distance, having a vaccine say within walking distance, and 95%. You made it available. I think it's been a great job. You've done a great job with that. I guess the next question is, what's the next step? You've seen an increase with the Delta variant coming, an increase with the FDA approval. How do we continue with people talking about incentives and other options? If there's an inconvenience factor for some people, maybe, you know, some type of incentives can get them over the hump? What makes the most sense for the next step?
Mayor Bochensky, the opportunities for increasing vaccination rates that seem to show some promise include the incentives, as you had mentioned. The other spot of opportunity would be individual employers now that the vaccine is fully FDA-approved, individual employers requiring the vaccination as a condition of employment, particularly in settings where you're at a higher risk of spread, such as healthcare settings and things like that. That would be another opportunity to raise our vaccine rate. So between those two, and, you know, seeing the state continue their efforts to get the, you know, get the word out about vaccine, those are kind of our big opportunities right now. With the remaining people to get vaccinated, we are facing a pretty substantial mountain to get over, to get over the hump on getting people vaccinated.
Thank you. So I guess one thing I'll propose to Council that we've been, we've been talking about, this incentive idea and what makes sense. And we had some conversation with the Shop Local campaign. How do we, if we do incentives, how do we keep those dollars local? And we've got an opportunity where we could do something with that. I would say the rollout was going well with the Shop Local, but maybe not quite as fast as we had thought. And maybe this is an opportunity to be able to, you know, get a few more people vaccinated that maybe it was, like I said, maybe it was inconvenient for other reasons. So I guess I'd propose that to Council and look for some thoughts on that, whether it's as long as supplies last, or it's a pilot program to see how it goes. I guess I'd be open to any comments from Council on something like that. President Sandy?
It seems to me that if the 10 to 20 and 19 to 29-year-olds are the people that aren't at 60%, we should be trying to figure out how to address those groups of individuals. For example, I would guess the vast majority of the people in the 19 to 29 age group all reside in an area that's relatively tight-knit by the university. I would propose, if we're going to incentivize anyone, why don't we, in our public health, go out on UND's campus, perhaps talk to President Armikos, get some space in the Memorial Union, and set up shop? And nothing incentivizes a college student more than 50 bucks, for example. And so providing, for example, if we were going to give out gift cards, let's take Public Health, and let's go right there, and let's sit up in the Memorial Union for a couple of weeks and see if we, see if we can get several thousand, 7,000 people that all wander through there and manage to push ourselves across the, across the goal line. To me, that seems relatively easy. I oversimplify things, though.
Other comments? Mr. Weber?
It sounds like a good idea. Yes, I'd support that. Very quickly, we're currently doing better than our peer communities, but we seem to be following or surpassing last year's trends. Last year, we had to bring in nurses from, you know, with federal support. But that's because All True serves a large region. Grand Forks actually did quite well compared to much of the rest of the state because we took a lead in different mitigation efforts. So Mayor, I know that you're, I believe you're meeting weekly with institutional partners and looking at these, and I'm interested in what Mr. Sandy's proposed or anything else that comes forward that you would suggest for our community. Beyond that, prevention is so necessary. It's a lot cheaper than treatment, and it's so much better for our local economy. So, yep, thank you.
Thank you. I guess any further comments from Council that would be, you know, totally opposed to that? Just is there general consensus on that idea? Or is there, I guess if there's anyone that is totally opposed to that, then now would be a good time to bring that up.
So we, to the best of my recollection, we were selling, we were selling gift cards for our community to get money, COVID money into the hands of businesses, restaurants, you name it, in our community. I don't know how that campaign has gone on, and I don't know how many, how much resources we have, but it seems to me the city of Grand Forks has already invested in those dollars into, into that program. If we still have dollars left, it would be great if we could utilize that to run this sort of a program.
I think we do got, Maggie Smith, could you maybe speak on that? We got you in attendance tonight. We might as well put you to work.
I pulled my numbers together, so in case you guys have questions. All right, so luckily, we do have money, which is available, and this could be a great cost-saving, since you guys have already put the COVID money towards it. This would just be another way to reposition it and rebrand it. And you're also talking about, too, how wrapping in UND students. We have a commercial going on for three months now with UND students promoting this gift card, so this would be very synchronous together. So we have a current balance of bonus bucks left that are $31,268. So the burn rate each month is roughly 1,700 or so, which is great. We have 49 participating merchants across the city, so it's not just localized to downtown. It's all the way out to, I just actually recruited Sandy Luck the other half tonight, so they're going to add on. But we've got a multitude of businesses. And comparatively to other programs that are being run in communities similar to ours, we are ahead of the national average in terms of merchants onboard. Our average card size that's being purchased is about $41, and the national is 43. And I thought the most compelling part is we are in the top 20 of the communities that are running gift card sales similar to this, which I thought was a real feather in our cap, because it shows our community's really coming together, and we're promoting this to really educate and support people shopping locally. And the average card was $40, which to me is great, because that means people are actually using it and they're spending it. Fun fact, Ellie's Ivy has 77 transactions, and a close second is Urban Stampede with 75 transactions. So you can see that people are really using it. And we cover, we cover a swath of different businesses. So to reach our widest group of people, we have food and beverages, spas, clothiers, home goods and jewelers, and we're looking at adding on some more home improvement groups and possibly some gas stations. So we're still expanding, and the program is going to be enduring even after the bonus bucks are expended.
All right, well, thank you. Any questions for Maggie?
Yeah.
Ms. Smith?
Quick, quick. Ms. Weber? Ms. Smith, so if I was going out to dinner at one of the places that you mentioned, before I went out that evening, I could go online and purchase a card? And basically, it's a savings for me right away as soon as I purchase that.
Yeah.
What, can you give us quick directions on how to go on, online and purchase?
Definitely. You can actually. Definitely. You can actually increase your spending by 40%. So if you go to lovelocalgf.com and you buy either $25, $50, or $100 gift card, the bonus bucks that were provided by the city for the COVID cares relief was able to front load a gift that comes to the buyer, and it actually says "from the city of Grand Forks," so that recognition is being received, and you're able to use it right away. I personally like to buy my $100 gift card, head over to Northern Wellness, get my massage, and then I have additional $40 where I can either go out for lunch or I can get some coffee. So there is that benefit to it.
Thank you. Well, thanks for putting that together. Really appreciate it. Any further comments? I guess on COVID in general, Ms. Mock?
So are we thinking a trial program, a partnership with Public Health where they would do this for a couple of weeks and see how it impacts the vaccination rate?
Mr. Phelan, if you want to give our thoughts, I will open up to council.
Sure. I think our thought is to use the balance that Ms. Smith talked about that, part of that. We may look to cede more of that through our CARES fund. As you recall, we set aside about $1.5 million into Fund 2163. So we have spending authority as administration up to $50,000. So we may, if it's overly successful, we may invest more into this program just to cede it. And of course, we have city council meetings. We can come back. But right now, it seems like over the next two weeks, we'll have enough money to fund the program, to move it forward. And I think what we'd like to see is maybe not only at UND Memorial Union, and we agree that with Council President Sandy, that's kind of where that population, but also work with Altru, wherever they're vaccinating people and others. And so you would be incentivized no matter where you go. You don't have to just be on campus. You could be at Altru. You could be at, you know, Sanford Health, or wherever you're getting vaccinated will incentivize you to get to wherever vaccinations are occurring. That's our thought right now, is that we do it citywide. We provide these. We were thinking, Mayor, you know, a $50 gift card is kind of the nominal amount to really incentivize people who want to go get vaccinated as part of the greater good of the community. That's where we were starting, as we thought about it late last week.
President Sandy?
Mr. Phelan, thank you. No reason why we shouldn't try to reward the people that are going to Wells Pharmacy. My issue is, we've already reached 60% for 99% of the people that are going to Walls or to CVS or any of the other pharmacies. We know because Mr. Doolitz told us that it's the 12 to 29 year olds, and we know where they are. In my opinion, our public health needs to make it easy for them to get it. They need to allow walk-ins, and they need to be there for extended hours when the kids are actually wandering through the university. Our public health, not that they haven't been working very hard, I think we need to look at this and try to be flexible and be there when the students are there and make it easy for them to get the shot. That's just my opinion, though.
I think we'll make that happen. And I didn't want to, I just didn't want to exclude it there. We're going to do it everywhere, but we're going to focus our attention onto campus, not blame campus for what our issues are. And I just think of what Ms. Compton said about, you know, what they're seeing in the hospital or across the range. You know, if our median age is still in that 60-year-old, it's throughout the community that we want to capture people that are unvaccinated. And, you know, Mr. Doolitz is using the 60%, and we hope that's a good herd immunity. But we're trying to capture every demographic that we will. But we'll hit it harder. And what I'm saying is, not only in Public Health, but we got, we have Walls, we have WellCorps. And so when the mayor spoke of these events that we did throughout the summer, it's important to note, it wasn't just Public Health. It was WellCorps, it was Walls. There are lots of other groups that help support it. Sometimes I remind Mr. Weber, sometimes it's under the Public Health banner, but under our Public Health banner, there's a lot of different groups that are doing a lot of things. So we'll enrich all those groups to really capture this and get after it before, so we can mute the wave that we're all concerned about, is what we'll do.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Mr. Weber, please.
This weekend, Comic-Con is coming. The age group that Mr. Sandy has mentioned, we could get them to buy local and give them a little incentive, get a vaccine. Be a happy weekend for everyone. Yes.
All right. Anything further? All right. Thank you.
All right. Public hearings, 3.1, public hearing and second reading of ordinance relating to the 2022 budget, including the 2022 salary plan and adoption of resolution establishing the 2022 fees. Your staff report and several items previously distributed are attached as well as the ordinance for tonight, fee list and salary plan. Maybe if I could just give a quick recap, and then I'll turn it over to you, Mayor and council for discussion and to open the public hearing.
Please.
So just a quick recap of the budget, as it's been a bit since we've had the budget in front of you. The budget was previewed on June 7, and the salary plan was presented at that time. The budget in its entirety then was presented to you on July 19 and was given preliminary approval on August 2. So this budget does invest in our people, public safety, infrastructure, technology. The mayor's put forth this budget with a slight decrease of mils, 0.88 mil decrease, which estimated to hold property taxes flat on the, for the city's portion on the average. Utility rates are held to 80, to just an 85 cent per month increase or 0.87% based on the average 6,000 gallon a month family residential user. Also included in this budget is the ARPA allocation as recommended, and it's the detail listed in your staff report there, with the majority being allocated for utility infrastructure to help offset what would have been larger rate increases, particularly in the wastewater fund. Other uses of the ARPA dollars were for POS system at the Alaris Center, mental health matters, software, radio infrastructure, road infrastructure, and city hall building security. This budget does use some general fund cash in the amount of about $200,000 to help fund portions of the budget, as well as $198,000 for wellness stabilization. Your staff report summarizes the main points of the budget, and the detail has been provided. Preliminary approval was given. So tonight, after discussion is complete and public hearing has been held, we look to hold the public hearing and have final adoption. You cannot increase the budget from its preliminary approval, but you can decrease. We also look for approval of the salary plan and resolution of fees for 2022. And I'm going to turn it over to you, Mayor.
Thank you, and thank you for your whole team and all departments for their work on that. I think broadly, it's a pretty good, pretty good-looking budget. We probably got some smaller items to work out tonight, but just a couple notes that I had. Grateful that the Public Safety NEPRS plan is going to continue. You know, we had that partially funded last year by the raises, but that's going to continue seamlessly, which is great, into the future. We've got a healthy amount in there for pay-for-performance, which I really like because that incentivizes hard work and efficient employees, and that the money will get dispersed to them based on their performance. We've got a lot of positive momentum, a lot of projects in the pipeline that should lead to growth in the end with, you know, continued high level of service. And we did it all by keeping taxes flat. We had a mill cut that's at least going to keep pace with home appreciation on average, which is great. And if you take into account inflation over the last two years to be flat, despite inflation, we're actually beating that pretty well, pretty handily, which is great. Hopefully, we continue to do that in the future. But all in all, I think the city's in great financial shape, and it's, you know, running as effectively and efficiently as ever. So it's pretty exciting. With that being said, let's open the public hearing at this time. Anybody in here to speak on the budget? And I guess if anybody has anything, you know, throughout, feel free to step up or let us know. All right. With that, we'll close the public hearing, and I'll open up to council for comments and anything else. We got, I believe we've got Tangi Bavet also online, and of course, other staff ready to answer questions.
I'll go first.
President Sandy?
Thanks, Mayor. I spent a fair amount of time, as I always do, referencing this year's budget to last year's budget. Because of COVID, because of, you know, circumstances, I actually spent a lot of time referencing this year's, well, 2022 budget with '21 and '20, looking for any sort of anomalies. I think if anything came to the top, it was we are taking care of our most important assets, not only our employees, but our infrastructure, the Alaris Center, the planning and the implementation of the construction and coming online of our new water treatment plant, the plans for upgrades to the wastewater treatment plant. I think if you look at, I came away from all of my research, think, feeling pretty good about the way that we as a group have been looking at our city and our important assets. And I think that this budget really had, it's got a little bit in it for everybody. Managing our property taxes, looking at keeping utility rates down. Hopefully, if sales tax continue to come in the way they have been, being able to buy down or pay back some of the pension that we're behind. In general, I'm really proud, and Mayor, I'll give you a lot of credit, and Mr. Phelan, and of course, the store stead and your team, I'll give you a lot of credit for, in my opinion, having your priorities in the right spot and looking to take care of things that we need to take care of in our community. I know that there are significant needs all across the community today. I don't think you can look at the newspaper, at the local stories, and see much more of how much the need there is in our community for so many things. So I'm really happy that we're able to hold the line on our spending and, you know, as we, you know, Mr. Phelan mentioned earlier, some of the amenities, we've also been able to take part in, the BMX track, the skate park, certainly the Veterans Memorial. Those are things that I believe we should be investing in as a community because they add to the quality of life issues that so many people are talking about. Quality of life is good for people's mental health. I think it's good for all of us. So as I've already mentioned, I'm not a fan of the dollars put aside for health insurance, so I will make a motion to eliminate the $45,000 from the budget for elected officials' health insurance. I don't know if I'll get a second or not. I haven't really spoken to anyone about that. But otherwise, I'm, I think it's great. And after that, I would entertain the motion to move approval without the $45,000. But certainly, I'd leave it open for others to visit. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So is a motion on the table, at least for that part?
There's a motion, yes.
All right. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. I do think we did have, in the meantime, and I don't know if he's still up for it, but I know Judge Boucher was interested on top, talking on the subject and reached out. So if you have any comments on that that you'd like to add, Judge?
I do, Your Honor. I want to talk generally about recruitment of candidates, qualified candidates, to be your city judge. I have not decided fully yet whether I will run for reelection in June. I don't need health insurance right now because fortunately, my wife worked at the University of North Dakota. We've been covered by health insurance through her, but it was an expense. In order to, as you know, in order to recruit qualified candidates to fill the position of judge, you need to offer a decent salary, and you need to offer benefits. Maybe not necessarily full-time benefits, but at least you're to the option to have partial compensation for those benefits. Health insurance is an extremely important component to hiring employees. And if you, there is no reason to not include elected officials, at least the judge, which is considered a full-time position. I can't tell you, and I don't know what they're doing in Fargo and those places right now. I did not research it. But I do believe that it would be very beneficial to recruit an attorney highly qualified to come in to run for this position. And without it, it will foreclose a number of attorneys from seeking the position. And so I highly recommend that you not remove it from the budget. It's not that big of an expense compared to other things you're spending. And it will not benefit me. So it's not something that you even need to make clear right now. Now, I can't speak for the other elected officials as to whether Mayor Bochensky, for example, needs it, or the city council members need it. But we do have the benefit of being in the plan, the city employees do, which I believe is the North Dakota First Plan, or at least the plan that they're allowed to get into. I'm not even sure I have the option of buying into the plan even if I wanted to, but it's such a substantial expense. Generally, I think it's a benefit that should be available to, I can only speak for myself, for the municipal judge position, at least in the future, to get a good, qualified candidate to run for this position. So thank you very much. I'd be willing to answer any questions.
Any questions for Drew? I want to ask you if you're going to stick around for another term. That'd be my only question.
Well, I haven't decided yet, for sure.
All right. Any other questions for?
Huh?
Please do. I guess we could.
I don't know if I can handle it anymore. I'm just joking. But it's my pleasure to serve, and I enjoy serving. The city, the city officials that I work with on a daily basis in this regard are excellent. It's been really an honor to represent the city as to the third branch of the government. You're the legislative, the mayor's the executive, I'm the judicial. My court is, and our court employees work very hard. They are adjured, by the way. And so they do benefit from that. So thank you. Any other questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Doesn't look like.
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Oh, thank you for sitting through everything before us. We appreciate it.
Well, I've really enjoyed it. I'm just impressed with the city projects and the vaccinations and all that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
If I may?
President Sandy?
The determination of a full versus part-time employee, is this, is our municipal judge in, that position must be somewhere called out in city code?
Mr. Gost, I don't know if this is your cue or Ms. Bavet's, but...
It is. I don't know if the city code defines it as a full-time position or a part-time, but it is in city code.
I'll have Ms. Bavet answer that question. I think ours is a bit of a hybrid. I think if you look at Fargo, they have a full-time judge. I think Bismarck may. I think with Mr. Boucher, he's essentially probably, he doesn't have an afternoon session, if you will. And so he's working, I think, five days a week. Generally, the morning sessions are open. So we're not calling him a full-time judge, but I think he's probably, Judge, you better answer this question yourself. So if you look at, I'll just say from a salary perspective, Mr. Boucher, you're in that 70-plus thousand dollar ranges of a judge. If you look at the comparison judges that are full-time, they're in that $120,000 plus. And so I think we have a little bit of a hybrid. He's, no, he's not a part-time employee, but he's not, we're not considering him full-time at this point.
Yeah, could you get, I could answer that question. The position of municipal judge, as long as you're going to have city ordinances that are enforceable by the city police and local people, you need a city judge. Otherwise, there's no one to enforce the ordinances. It is required by state law. A salary is, the city council sets the salary. There is no limit, except there's a minimum for cities of a certain size. I am the third, judges are paid various, by the city's various amounts. There are some minimum standards. For example, I'm also the judge in Emmeraide, O'Leary, Moore, and Northwood. I go on a different day, outside of my time, and there's a small incremental payment for that, but that's only once a month. The Fargo judge, Mr. Phelan is correct, is more like a full-time judge. In fact, their alternate judge has a lot more work. It's a big city. Bismarck, the judge there, gets paid quite a bit more, maybe $30,000 more than we get paid here, maybe even closer to 40,000 more. But he's been a judge for a lot more years, probably 10 more years than me. The Fargo judge also gets paid about 20,000 more, 40,000, 20 to 40,000. I used, I had the numbers in my head earlier today, and I just don't have them right now. The Minded judge, which would be more comparable, is a lower payment. Mandan is its own judge. But that is set by you all, and then there are built... own judge, but that is set by you all, and then, there are built-in cost of living increases that I do get and have been over the last nine, 10 years that I've been the judge. Did that answer your question, Councilman Sandy?
It did, thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, I do want to say one other thing about recruitment and whether it's a part-time job or a full-time job. In my experience, I had a very active litigation practice while I was municipal judge, it was impossible for me to really hold on to a litigation practice, so your city judge, with a few exceptions, it's really more of a kind of a quasi-retirement position, the average attorney will earn way more in private practice than they would be a municipal judge. So, as I might add, you get what you pay for, generally, but I didn't need the extra money because I was basically in a retirement situation and was able to do this position. But you're not going to find that among everybody, okay? I'm sorry to keep speaking.
Spurche, how many years have you been our municipal judge?
Well, I can't even remember, but it's been about 10 years, and I was an alternate judge for about three years before that. It took, I was trying, I'd have to think back at how many terms I've served.
I'm pretty confident you've sworn me in all three times.
I've never seen you in court, though.
Not yet, Todd. So, the, kind of a leading question, perhaps Ms. Pavet could answer the question for me, the, we went to a few years ago, from, I don't know what it was, 21 or 23 city comparison, down to 12, and now, we're using that 12 to the mayor's benefit, getting a pretty significant raise this year, and council members are not. Why are we only comparing the municipal judge to four cities versus the 12 that we're comparing all of the rest of us to?
Thank you for the question, Council President Sandy. Actually, what was brought into motion a few years ago was that for the municipal judge, which is a part-time position, we would just follow the salary plan percentage, so we're just using those data points as points of reference, kind of sanity checks to speak, and, and we are using the actual overall percentage to increase the municipal judge's wages per year.
Got it. I wonder if the other elected officials should be evaluated the same way the rest of us are? So, where am I going with this? I'm not really sure, perhaps, perhaps I spoke too soon, although I am 100% still believe that we shouldn't offer health insurance to elected officials, perhaps we need that money to pay the, the judge what he's actually should be getting paid based upon what all the other judges that are doing similar work to him are get, are getting paid. So, perhaps we should not eliminate the 45,000 today, keep that, have our HR department go and do the survey the way, the way they have for all the rest of us, and then evaluate the judge's salary based upon that survey, and then make a determination, and if we need some of the money out of the 45,000, put it towards his salary. I'm not sure how I would make that motion, but in my opinion, if, if he is being paid unfairly, he didn't say that, but if he is being paid unfairly, we should address that, that issue, in my opinion.
Ms. Storestead?
Well, first of all, I do think we currently have a motion and a second on the floor by Sandy and Weber to decrease the 45,000 health insurance, so, Mr. Gost, I don't know if they have to vote on that before they, or if they can amend.
But Mr. Sandy was about to amend his motion, was my understanding. Can he not do that?
He can amend his motion, or he can vote on the pending motion.
Well, I'll just, I'll just rescind my motion.
Okay.
For sake of conversation. So, you'll need to second that, Mr. Weber, or agree to it.
Yeah, Mr. Weber, do you agree to his rescindication of?
I didn't know that that was necessary, but I thought that he could rescind it, yes. So, are we, are we looking for a motion, then?
Further comment or a motion, sure?
I'll wait for further comments.
And then, to your other question, so if I'm understanding you, President Sandy, to keep, you want to adjust your motion to approve, to keep the 45,000 in there and have the judge's salary evaluated by your HR department, what we could do in that case is move the 45,000 into a contingency line item for further consideration of council, that would be an option.
That would be fine by me, and if we do that, then, and others agree, do we need a motion to amend the budget to do that? If so, I would make that motion?
Maybe before the motion, maybe I, I can just kind of describe the data, it's on page 44 of your salary plan, and so, if you look at the four data points, it's the city of Bismarck's, 122,000, city of Minut's, 55,000, city of Fargo is 116,000, and the city of West Fargo is 50,000, and what we have is proposed as part of our salary would be 75,000, almost 76,000. If you took all the weighting averages of those, salary should be set around 99,000, if you look on that page 44. The challenge with this is what we're trying to say is, maybe we have a plus or minus, probably plus 50% judge, two of the comparisons are probably that halftime, two of them are full-time, and so, like, even what we did with the mayor when we looked at what he, some cities have full-time mayors, and what we did is, we took the mayor's salary and we halved it to make like a more of a part-time like that we're supposed to have in Grand Forks, so, I'm just saying, I think it's, it's not as, and with council members, we just took, we assumed they're all part-time in the other communities, and we just said those are all the, all the, all the same, so I'm just saying, there is some nuance to the municipal judge versus others. I think one of the questions I would have for the city council, and probably before the election would come, is do we want to have a municipal judge that is in more of a full-time position, similar to what we see in Bismarck and Fargo, and maybe that's a, that would be a policymaker discussion, should we do that? Well, obviously, we want to seek input from Judge Boucher to see if he thinks that's necessary moving forward with or without him. I think that would be a bigger policy discussion, and then, I think the salary would, would come along with it, we should discuss what really are the demands of our community, not, not only today, but over the next four years.
Vice President Mock?
Mr. Phelan, if I could ask a follow-up question on that, I think that might be more of a relevant conversation and probably a little broader than this, what, so, we could probably review that position, and it's within city code, so if we did that prior to the election, that would give us the position to look at that salary and compensation package, to see if that's fair, if it needs to be adjusted, as well as workload, and then, could we, if that's a larger discussion that we shouldn't necessarily be having tonight, what would we do budgetary-wise? Would we reserve those funds so that we have them in case we decide we need to increase that salary or add those benefits as part of the salary package, or would we amend the budget at that time if we came to that decision?
Mayor Bochensky and Council Vice President Mock, I, I agree with you in the first, I think it should be a policy discussion, well, in advance of, of the June, I guess, 22 elections, so everyone's well aware of that and can kind of prepare themselves for that, and we can make all the ordinances and changes. I think of the second question on the budget, I wouldn't, not that, you know, you know, 50,000 doesn't matter, you know, if we do this, I wouldn't let that be the leading, you know, whether we should take the 45,000 and put it in there, I think we can amend the budget, when you make a final, final policy decision, we certainly have other contingencies and cash balances in other accounts, so I wouldn't, force yourself to do something with the 45,000 if you don't want to, because I think once the decision is made, we'll come forward with a budget amendment, if applied, and we'll do that at that point in time.
So, we can make a decision tonight, just based on what you wanted to do with that?
I wouldn't feel forced tonight to make that decision.
And then, we could amend if that were, okay.
Okay, so we want to go back to the original motion, Mr. Sandy? Can you read, can you unrescind your motion, Mr. Gost?
I'll move to remove the 45,000 from, from the budget.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Good, a second from Mr. Bean, all right, any further discussion on that item?
I think I'm probably the unpopular comment here, but there was four city council people that ran last election unopposed, and I think that we get paid like two bucks an hour when you kind of average it out, you know, and I guess I'm not afraid of a little competition and afraid of a little more incentive, I had a great discussion with administrator of another municipality, and they're, they're very eager to get more people to run, and I think that this is something that probably, I mean, I'm not going to take advantage of it, but if there's someone that maybe would do good for my community that would take advantage of it, maybe it's something that could be a positive, so I'm, I'm personally going to vote against that, even though I'm not going to take advantage of it, I don't know anyone that would, but I think that we need more people running for public office.
Thank you, Mr. Cavami, any further comments? Let's, Ms. Dockler, then we'll go to Mr. Weigle.
I would agree that we need more people to run for public office, and when I ran for council, this council seat, I didn't run unopposed, and it was good, it was nice to be able to swap ideas and have conversation and kind of sharpen, sharpen the sword, right? But I also think that with that money that we're talking about for benefits, we could say, why don't we repurpose it and put it towards salary, like others were saying tonight, and that would also be incentivized for people to run for council. I think part of the conversation about running for council, too, is in the manner in which we treat each other when we speak, here on the dais, but also out in the public, and the way that we hold each other accountable for the way that we treat each other. This isn't a part of the budget discussion, but if we're going to talk about encouraging people to run for office, we also need to take responsibility for those conversations that are being held out within our community as well, especially in extremely difficult times like COVID. So, I think if we do that, and we look at using that money to increase maybe the dollar amount that officials are being reimbursed for, because these are part-time positions, I have a full-time job that I go to every day, and I work, and then I come here and do this as well, maybe that would work as the incentive, incentive, enough incentive to get people to run.
Thank you, Mr. Weigle.
I think my comments maybe fall a little bit in between Katie's, or Ms. Dockler's, and Mr. Cavami's. I believe a county commissioner's salary across the, just across the way over here is in the neighborhood of 18,500, they meet twice a month, I believe. We're here every single night dealing with the city's business, and in my personal opinion, doing a lot more work than any county commissioner's doing over there, and, and I work with them, and I, I know many of them. I would agree with Mr. Cavami that health insurance is a big thing, and, and it may entice other people to run, but I also agree with Ms. Dockler that, you know, it probably comes out to less than minimum wage at times. At the same time, I voted to give our salary increase back one year, when times were tough for city employees, and so, I, I'm kind of all over the place, but I, I do think there are things that we need to do to, to address, to get more people to run for elected offices.
Thank you, Mr. Weigle, any further comment?
Mr. Mayor?
President Sandy?
Thank you. Scavami, I appreciate your sentiment, I, I don't know how to say this, this, this off, the kinder, gentler Dana Sandy, I think we want, we, our community desperately needs people that are civic-minded to stand up and do their duty, and never has the pay or benefits been any reason why I raised my hand to be here, and I don't think any of the rest of you did either. I think what we need is the right people to run, not more people running, and I don't think offering health insurance does that. I just, I don't believe that we should give ourselves something, a benefit, that most people, that 99% of the people working part-time in Grand Forks don't have that benefit, I just don't feel good about giving that to myself. We can talk all day, if people want to look at calendars and start adding up hours that we're putting in here, I could make the argument that we're all drastically underpaid if we wanted to do that. I, just, and I, I'm not going to get into that today, I'm pretty sure I put in, well, with the exception of the mayor, now, I put in more hours than everybody else does, and that's, it comes with the job, and that's okay, but I, I can't, I can't bring myself to say that I should get health insurance, or I should get a benefit that most people in Grand Forks don't get, which is why I made my motion, and, and it's, it's not a personal thing, and if I get, if I lose the vote, no problem, we'll move on.
Thank you, President Sandy, Mr. Weigle?
My question for Mr. Sandy would be, if we take the council out of it, then, because this, this is a part-time job, and I think I've, Mayor Bochensky's been doing a ton of work, even like you have said, may, maybe it's something that the mayor and the municipal judge have access to. I don't know what the next mayor's going to be, maybe he doesn't put in, or she doesn't put in as much time as, as Mayor Bochensky does, but to me, I think I've seen the mayor in city hall, a significant amount of time over the last year or two, so, maybe it's not something for the council members, maybe it's something for the judge and, and the mayor, so I'll throw that on the table as well.
Thank you, Mr. Weigle, anything further? Ms. Mock? Let's, Mr. Councilmember Bean, please.
Well, sorry, thank you, I've just, I know I seconded, I'm probably more of a traditionalist, I'm here to serve the community, and, and, and I do think we put in a lot of time, I was commenting to another earlier about the time that both our president and vice president put in, which is an extraordinary amount of time, at the same time, they're working on full-time jobs, and I think, but I think that all of us here are primarily here because of our desire to serve the community and give back for, to, to the citizens of Grand Forks, and that's why I seconded his motion.
Thank you, Mr. Bean, Ms. Mock?
I just wanted to clarify, with city employees that are part-time, is their health insurance covered?
I think, I'll let Tanji follow up, I, I think there's a difference, if you were a seasonal contracted employee, that's somebody working in public works or something over the summer, they are not provided benefits, if you were, for example, if you were a contracted benefited employee, and, and some are 100% full-time, and so, they would receive full-time benefits if you were 100%, however, if you were less than a percentage of that, say, you, you were under a grant, or say you're 75%, you'd get a 75% benefit factor, and so, we are offering benefits to employees that are less than 100% at, at whatever their percentage is per, per their employment agreement, so I just have Ms. Pavet also kind of reiterate further on that matter.
Thank you, Todd, council members and Mayor Bochensky, the only thing I'd clarify with what Todd said is that health benefits are offered to those individuals who work 50% time or more, but not for the seasonal employees.
All right, any further comment?
Motion's through.
Yeah, so let's go, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
How did we end up there? Can we, can you run that down? I didn't quite get that.
I think we should do a roll call, okay, so this is to decrease the budget 45,000 health insurance for elected officials, Weigle?
No.
Dockler? Yes.
No.
Weber?
No.
Mock?
Yes.
Cavami?
No.
Bean?
Yes.
And Sandy?
Yes.
Okay, we have four yeses.
Yeah, motion carries, thank you, all right.
I don't approve on the budget.
We got a motion to approve, we got a second from Mr. Weigle?
Can I just have you state in your, as part of your motion, to also, salary plan and the fees, thank you.
All right, we got a motion and a second, I think the original motion from Sandy, a second from Mr. Weigle, to approve the 2022 budget and put an end to that long chapter of work, any further comments? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? of work. Any further comments? All right, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We've got unanimous approval for item three point one. Motion carries. All right, we are on to action items. I know for sure we want to pull four point eight, and then if I could get a, a motion to move, we're going to have to go into executive session for four point eleven. So if I get a motion to move that after, or just before adjournment and after the mayor and council member comments. Got a motion from Mr. Weber and a second from Mr. Cavami. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. So that motion carries. So four point eleven will be moved to the end. Any other items that council wishes to pull? Ms. Dockler?
Four point nine.
Four point nine. Any other items?
Mr. Mayor, which one did you?
Four point eight and four point nine so far.
Thank you.
You good with that?
Yep.
All right, sounds good. So on the consent agenda, we'd be looking to move forward four point one, four point two, four point three, four point four, four point five, four point six, and four point seven, and four point ten. Can I get a motion to approve those items? Got a motion for, motion for approval from Ms. Mock, second by Mr. Weber. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those motion carry. So we are on to four point eight.
Four point eight is the Blue Zones request from Altru Health Foundation, including their staff report, its institutional partners presentation, Grand Forks proposal report, NCH case study, email, and sales tax economic development fund projection.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to make a few comments on this before we get started. You know, regardless of how this, this motion ends up tonight, I think we're all in favor of having a healthy community and we, we certainly appreciate the, the work that Altru's done, both in leading this, but also the work that they've done this, over this pandemic. I mean, the fact that we've had people getting in and out of the hospital, the fact that we've had low death numbers, that just the work that, that Altru has done has just been phenomenal. So I just want to first say how much we appreciate that. And we're all committed to the healthy li-healthy lifestyle and healthy living. I think today the, the debate's just going to be, is this the right product and is, is this where city funds should be used? So I think that's the debate. So Mr. Phelan, why don't you take it away?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. It is quite nice that whether this moves forward or not, we are debating something that's positive. It's about healthy living and trying to create a better community. And so it could be a lot worse tonight, of what we're debating tonight. So with that, I, I know I'm, I'm thankful that Jana Pasture from the North Dakota Department of Health has joined us. I know Mr. Moulman is here on behalf of Altru. And then I think Kristi Aljiran from Altru is going to help quarterback her group to give you an update and then provide some perspectives from different points of view. So with that, I hand it over to our, our friend and colleague, Ms. Aljiran.
Thank you, Todd. Thank you, Mayor Bochensky, President Sandy, and members of the council. We are so pleased to be back here tonight. Yes, to debate something positive and to give you some updates on the Blue Zones project. As Mr. Phelan said, we've got some guests here with us this evening. I have Audrey Lawrence, who was with me here last time, our Director of Strategy and Engagement at Altru Health System, and then Dave Moulman, our CEO, who will be speaking in a few minutes, and Ms. Pasture from the North Dakota Department of Health. So I'm going to start and Audrey's going to jump in and we'll just give you a few updates on the project since the last time we spoke. Then I'll call in Mr. Moulman and, or I guess actually Jana will go first and then Mr. Moulman will wrap us up at the end. So a few updates. I just wanted to share that we did some pretty intense reference calls to do our own due diligence at Altru Health System. So our CFO, Doug Arvin, and myself spent some time, significant time with three different health systems who have led the Blue Zones projects in their communities. Dave Moulman and Dr. Weiser were able to join for several of those calls and they were quite inspirational. And if any of you know Mr. Arvin, you probably know that he asked the hard questions. So I just want to share that with you so that you have that reassurance that a lot of those hard questions that maybe some of you are thinking about, he has asked. Does this really save money? Does it really work? You know, all these studies that have been done, does it really happen when you take it on in your community? And the answer is yes. One of the specific things I wanted to share that we learned from Texas Health Resources, they use the Global Indicator of the Gallup Wellbeing Index. So it's an index that measures financial community and personal health, and they rank cities across the United States. And their city went from being a hundred and eighty-third in their first year of Blue Zones to being ranked thirty-first after just five years. Oops, excuse me. So that was kind of a fun thing that he shared and there were many other things that they shared. The second really exciting update that I want to share with you all this evening is that Altru has landed on the amount of our investment. So we are really, really thrilled to be able to share that Altru will be investing one point five million dollars into this project. It will be one million dollars from Altru Health System and five hundred thousand dollars from Altru Health Foundation. Thirdly, we're really excited that Blue Cross Blue Shield has re-engaged in this project. If you'll remember, last time I was before you all, we talked about how we had tried to get them involved from the payer perspective. They did decline at that time. Since they heard about some progress that was being made in our community, they've come back to the table. So Dr. Weiser, Doug Arvin, Audrey, and myself met with their CEO, Dan Conrad, along with a couple of their other staff last week. And they would like to support this project. They would like to see Grand Forks as the pilot city for the state of North Dakota, but they want to see that you are all in as well. So there is somewhat of a domino effect happening here. So they want to commit, they're willing to commit, they use those words, but they want to partner with the city of Grand Forks, with Altru Health System, with the state of North Dakota. The state is probably the next update, and I'll let Ms. Pasture, when she's ready to, when we turn it over to her, she can explain more. But just to let you know that their original investment has also increased. So originally, they had committed to one point two five million for this area. And I think she'll be able to share when we turn it over to her that their commitment has also increased and is also dependent on some of these other partnerships. They too, as we talked about last time, have that window. So they do need to move on to other projects if we're not ready to commit at this time. Before I turn it over to Audrey for some additional updates, I just wanted to make just a couple of what I think are really important points about why now is the perfect opportunity to take advantage of this project. So one of the things that Audrey and I often hear is we've gone around and shared with different groups is, you know, why can't we just do this project ourselves? I think some of you asked that last time. You know, why do we need Blue Zones? Why do we need this particular company to help us move forward? And I think that's a really, really fair question. And I think, I just want to share the, the best answer that I have for you. And I think the answer is that we would have already done it. I think if we were going to do it ourselves, we would have done it. So the issues that we're seeing, the problems in our community, the health issues that we're facing, those are not new. The same things come up over and over. You'll hear from Audrey about our community health assessment, that Altru Health System does in conjunction with public health. The same issues come up every single time. And we've never taken the time, energy, or the resources needed to really proactively take on that transformation of the health and wellness of our whole community. And more importantly, I think even if we did decide to do that, if you decided to do that as a city of Grand Forks, you'd never have this amount of resources coming toward you at the same time. So for every dollar that the city of Grand Forks puts in, you're likely going to get three dollars back if you look at Altru, the state, and likely Blue Cross, Blue Cross Blue Shield. So that would be really hard for any of us to do alone, but when we come together, we can make that kind of transformational change that wouldn't be possible otherwise. The second really important point is that we have this roadmap all ready for us. So the community assessment, all the work that was done that showed what our issues are, what we need to work on, that's all ready for us. It's like a present with a bow wrapped up. We know exactly what we need to do and we have the specific indicators in our community. Third, we would hire local people to work on this project, but we'd have national experts at our fingertips. So to me, that's a really great combination. We have the local control, we decide ourselves, it all comes from the ground up. But at the same time, we have our national experts on speed dial. They are able to tell us immediately what works, where the evidence-based practices are, and, and what has worked in other communities. They have people assigned specifically to our community to do that. I think another important point is that this will touch every single citizen in Grand Forks. So this is one of those initiatives that's, you know, going to impact everybody's life and make it more positive. And that's, that's something you can say about a lot of things that happen with, with city funds. And then finally, I think really important from my perspective in working on transformational change over my career is that we have measures built in to, to evaluate this project. So it's not something we're just going to say, oh, I hope it works, but we will be measuring it all along the way and we can tweak it if it's not working and we can make sure that we are changing those indicators that we want to change. So it just seems like a kind of this perfectly wrapped gift that would be really short-sighted of us to not take advantage of the specific situation that we're at, at this time with all these partners coming together, with a roadmap laid out in front of us and measures in place and something that will impact the entire community. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Audrey just to share a couple of more updates. Thank you, Kristi.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm going to spend just a few minutes talking about some additional local support that we have, as well as some other factors that position us well for a Blue Zones project. So firstly, really happy to share that Grand Forks Public Schools does support this project. Dr. Terry Brenner was able to attend the Executive Roundtable in August and has indicated his support of Blue Zones as well. While they're not a financial partner, they will be a very important partner as we move toward implementation of a Blue Zones project. Secondly, when we were at the Committee of the Whole, council member, council member Weigle asked about the impact of a Blue Zones project on mental health concerns, given the immense need in our community. So we reached out to Jeff Gockler, who is the Mental Health Coordinator with Grand Forks Public Schools, who has provided a letter of support that's being handed out to you right now. Is co-chair of the Advisory Board for the Mental Health Matters Community Collaborative. He believes that the philosophy of the Blue Zones project is completely in line with his group's mission and vision, which you will see outlined in his letter. I also want to recognize that we're happy to have with us tonight the other co-chair of the Advisory Board, Ashley Cleveland, to show her support and answer any questions that you may have when we get to that point. Thirdly, wanted to point out a recent endorsement from the U.S. Conference of Mayors. There was a resolution that was included in your packet, I believe, that you received prior to this meeting. Just some highlights of that endorsement is really looking at how individuals in good health are the first line of defense against infectious disease, including a good chance of mild symptoms and recovery from COVID-19, while those with chronic conditions are at high risk for severe illness and death. And we've certainly seen that across our county and across our state. Communities traditionally rely on a reactive approach to health, focused on causes and consequences and diagnosis, while communities with proactive wellbeing initiatives focus on prevention, healthy lifestyle, and pursuit of optimal wellbeing. The Blue Zones model improves the wellbeing of the entire populations with that systems-focused, multi-dimensional effort that we discussed last time in terms of people, policies, and places. And communities that create Blue Zones wellbeing initiatives with a focus on, will focus, rather, excuse me, on the creation of a community wellbeing movement. So then the, the resolution itself is that the United States Conference of Mayors supports the proactive systems approach to health, similar to what's been put in place in the city of Fort Worth, including that focus on prevention, healthy lifestyle, and pursuit of optimal wellbeing, and the creation of Blue Zones initiative to focus on the creation of a community wellbeing movement. And I think that connects back to what Kristi and I shared with you before about how different a Blue Zones project is from other wellness initiatives. Lastly, I just wanted to spend a moment talking about our community health assessment work, as Kristi mentioned. Altru Health System conducts a community health assessment every three years. This work is done in partnership with, very closely with public health. Debbie Swanson and I work on this together. And we involve many other community stakeholders in an advisory committee. Since the first assessment that we conducted in 2013, there've been three areas that have been consistently identified as health improvement priorities. The first one being obesity, the second being substance use or abuse, alcohol, and other drugs, and then the third one is behavioral health. Additionally, there was a recent bulletin from the American Public Health Association that affirmed obesity and excessive drinking as challenges for our state. Twenty-three percent of the adult population in North Dakota drinks excessively, second highest in the nation, and almost thirty-five percent of the population of North Dakota is obese. And the adult obesity rate in the state has more than doubled since nineteen ninety. The most current numbers available for our county are that thirty-two percent of the adult population is obese and twenty-two percent of the population reports excessive drinking. So we're not that far off from what was released by the American Public Health Association. So while work has been happening in our community, certainly to address these priorities, none really have been able to generate the transformational change. And has been, as has been demonstrated in other communities, a Blue Zones project can do that. So next, I will invite Jana to share some comments with us.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to be here and may everything be and members of the council. I'm Jana Pastor. I'm the Director for the Division of Health Promotion with the North Dakota Department of Health. And four years ago, I was tasked with looking ahead, which seems so ominous now, but really looking at the improvement of social determinants of health in communities as it relates to the improvement of overall health without being the individualistic burden. So this all started four years ago for me. The reason we looked at Blue Zones among dozens of other types of community transformation activities is because it had been replicated at this time over sixty times in the United States, including many communities in the Midwest that look just like ours. One of the things that we liked the most about it was the level of accountability and the fact that the local stakeholder group gets to set the metrics to which this project is measured. And that when those outcomes are not met, those fees are forfeited, which I know we, I heard lots of conversation tonight about costs and projects not meeting their metrics and what happens then. And this is one of those projects where when metrics aren't met, which we don't hope for, but if they're not, the, the fees do become forfeited. So one of the things that I would just like to share, we're pretty data-driven with the Department of Health and under our governor. And just in general, I have an epidemiology and evaluation background, so numbers mean a lot to me. Diabetes, hypertension, hyperlipidemia, and poor mental health, they are four of the most costly chronic conditions. They are also four of the most important indicators in predicting how a person and a population are going to fare during this ongoing pandemic and, God forbid, in any future viral pandemics as well. They're also four of the metrics that Blue Zones activities do work to address on the most basic root cause level, meaning that change is sustained over time. It is truly transformative. When I looked at Grand Forks specifically as one of the communities, I had to get support to do a readiness assessment, which was very easy to gain for the same reasons some of you mentioned. How do you argue against being healthy? So of course, the readiness assessment that I was able to fund with our federal grant was a no-brainer. So we did those in four communities. Having previously lived in Grand Forks, I was interested in the outcomes. What we do know is that in North Dakota, more than one in three people have hypertension and are prediabetic, and that unfortunately, nearly seventy percent of North Dakotans are overweight or obese in the adult category. So in Grand Forks, the city spends approximately fourteen million dollars a year on employee health insurance, a cost that is only going to increase over time. Communities that have participated in and moved into a Blue Zone certification have all achieved healthcare savings across their populations, and we expect no difference in Grand Forks for that to happen. There are one thousand eighty-six insured city employees. Of those, there's currently six hundred and sixty-seven official diagnosis of one of those four conditions I already mentioned. Those conditions are highly underdiagnosed, so the number of people living with hypertension, hypoepidemia, or prediabetes that are not diagnosed is, is actually higher. So I'm going to use a really conservative math. So I'm going to use a really conservative math algorithm. The average community in the Blue Zones communities have decreased their insurance premiums per subscriber by up to four thousand dollars annually. So for instance, the Naples community was able to reduce their premium by thirty-seven hundred dollars per subscriber, which saved them twenty-seven million dollars a year starting three years into their project. I would say, just for context, that we would do a thousand dollar reduction in the cost of healthcare to the city per subscriber. That would be a really conservative savings compared to other cities, which means in less than two years, that would all be recovered. Actually, over two million dollars would have been saved for the city. Two million dollars that then is able to be reinvested in the city's budget for infrastructure and public service projects, parks, sewage, water, crazy snow removal costs, flood mitigation. Without doing something drastic to transform communities, not just Grand Forks, but across our state, healthcare is only going to continue to cost more, which means each city is going to have to continue, and employer, I should say, is going to have to continue to come up with more and more money to cover health insurance or be in situations where employees are no longer offered the benefit of the health insurance that is so important for a lot of job applicants. And then finally, beyond those data and numbers and the bottom line dollar, which is always really important, Blue Zones communities have benefited from so many things beyond just health improvement, but economic resiliency, which is why the Main Street Initiative and I have worked so closely together for the past four years. They have been one of my best supporters. In fact, one of their employees is leading the Walla Walla Project in Washington now. But Grand Forks in our state are competing on a global stage for workforce. That's just our reality now. When people can kind of work from anywhere, it's not so much the job that people are looking for as it is the quality of life that their community is going to offer. And so having a national platform like Blue Zones to certify Grand Forks and have that be recognized is definitely something that a new job applicant or people that are looking to relocate are going to see. And so I just want to share that I do have an unprecedented allocation. When we started this, I did not have any reason to believe I would ever have funding for the implementation of a Blue Zones project. I only had funding to do the assessment. So silver lining to COVID, I guess, is that the federal government did approve the use of our ARPA funds for this project due to pilots in North Dakota as it relates to the resiliency of communities and preparing populations for future pandemics to fare better. So that is how I got the approval, and I really do hope that Grand Forks is able to move forward on this project. I think there's very few projects that end up with an initial investment that leads to cost savings year after year after year in the budget that can be used in the future. And so I'm also available for questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Pastore? This time. I see Mr. Moleman's getting ready to do something, so. Please.
Good evening, Mayor, President, Vice President, members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening a little bit about the Blue Zones opportunity that we have together here in Grand Forks. My name is Dave Moleman. I'm CEO of Altru Health System, and my comments will be very brief. But I thought it was important that I come and offer you some thoughts that I have about why I think this is such a great opportunity for our community and why it is so important for Grand Forks and so important for us all to think hard about doing. You know, one of the things that I'm most proud about for living in the community of Grand Forks is the way that we work together here. I think our community is just a lot different than most communities across America and even other communities across the state of North Dakota. And no matter what our job is, I think that we're all trying to make our community be the best community for our citizens to live in. We all, even though we have different jobs, we're all trying to make this community be a vibrant one, one that's safe, one that's a great place for our families to live, one that's a healthy place for our kids to live, and one that people live here because of the community itself, not just because of whatever job they're doing or other conditions that they have. So I think that we're a community that's on fire for making that kind of change in the community, and we're using our partnership. I have to say, the Grand Forks City Council is owed great credit for what we've already accomplished. We've done so much in this community. We've done it together, but you know, who could attend this evening's meeting of the council and not be inspired by the things that the council has done just this evening to try to make the quality of life better in Grand Forks? What I wanted to talk to you about, about the Blue Zones opportunity is that I think that it is yet another chance for us to use partnership to do something that will yield big returns, big benefits for our communities. I don't need to tell you again about the things that have shown up in our community's health assessment, but in spite of all of our progress as a community, we still have difficult challenges to face. You know, looking at any of those top three that Audrey mentioned, just take obesity, for instance. Well, when you have a high rate of obesity in a community, as we do in this, in this community, that is a direct precursor of lots of other things. Diabetes, heart disease that kills more people of our community than any other disease, metabolic diseases, cancer, orthopedic issues, loss of work, and the list goes on and on. So those are real problems for our community, and they're creating a great cost for us in the community. Now, of course, we've been working on those issues together, all of us, all of us have, but there's still work that remains to be done. And I think the opportunity with Blue Zones is that we can once again do this as a group of partners that can help us yield those returns for the, for the community. I know the questions. And when I first heard about Blue Zones, I had the same questions that I think you would logically have. You know, is this the right place to be spending our money? Is there, that's an awful lot of money. Is there a good return for it? And what I've learned through the process is that community after community who has undertaken this, those who have dedicated themselves to it, they have shown enormous returns. Of course, the most important returns are the returns that they have in quality of life for the people who are in those communities. And community after community has shown community weight loss, improvement in outlook on life, decrease in behavioral health issues in the community, decreases in time off from work and so forth and so on. And just on the economic basis alone, every community that we talked to said that they received multiples of their investment back economically in the community, whether it be reductions in the cost of insurance for employers like the city of Grand Forks or for Altru Health System, but others in the community. Or other economic benefits like having people in the community be able to be fully productive. And as we know, that if people are fully productive, they're more, more happy in their, in their community. I think these are things that are worth considering for all of us. I want to throw back the kind words that the mayor said about Altru Health System, back to the city council in the work that we've been about these days, you know, even, even the discussion that was held earlier this evening on vaccinations. I cannot tell you how important and beneficial it has been to have the partnership of the Grand Forks City Council and the city of Grand Forks and the work that we're doing. So thank you very much. And unless you have questions for me.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Moleman?
I can turn it to Kristi to close this up.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Thanks, Jana. So yeah, just to close, we are respectfully requesting that the city match Altru and the state of North Dakota's investment of one point five million dollars over four years, and we would be really thrilled to partner with you all on this really important project. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I know I got two questions that are going to get asked, so I figured I might as well be the one that asks them. First question, so after the first four years, how do you foresee the funding if the state drops off? Is this, I mean, can we kind of think about this as maybe it's probably in perpetuity or after four years, is it going to be less? Or what's the continuing mechanism beyond the first four years?
Yeah, great question, Mayor Bochinski, members of the council. So we would make the commitment for those four years, and then at that time, there is a decision point where you can decide if you want to move on with Blue Zones to a second phase, kind of a continuity or sustainability phase. We are pretty confident that we probably wouldn't need to do that. Most of the communities we talked to were able to maintain the changes on their own. And once they had done that initial work and made a lot of the changes, they were able to sustain the project. So I don't see it as something that we'd be coming back for after the four years.
All right. The last one's a tough one, but I'll get it out of the way. If the city supports it but doesn't financially support it, do you see it squashing or do you think it'll still continue? What happens if we don't come to yes tonight?
Yeah, Mayor Bochinski, members of the council, I really appreciate that question because it is a critical question for us. I think it will be really hard for us to move forward without the city's investment. I think that Blue Cross was very excited to be re-engaged because they knew the city was considering it. And I think I can probably speak on behalf of Ms. Pastore that the city will likely move on to other priorities should we not be able to raise the needed funds locally. So I think it is critical that we kind of have this window of time for us all to come together to make it happen.
Thank you. Open up the council. President Sandy.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Haljiran, thank you again. Appreciate the candid conversations over the last week or so. I really appreciate, and it's hard to put into terms the gratitude you can have towards an organization for what they do for a community. Altru has always, your leadership, Mr. Moleman, and others, always raised your hands when the community has needed things. And so I really appreciate that, which is also why it's really hard for me not to raise my hand right now when Altru is coming to us. As I said a couple of weeks ago, it's very hard to say no to people you like and you know are doing good work and, and you know, have the, truly have the best intentions for our community. For me, this is a hundred percent about our finances and the limited resources that we have within our community and where, not necessarily what's more important, but what might be more critical today. So for me, this isn't necessarily I'm voting against the Blue Zones concept as it is, I can count on two hands and two feet, all of the pending things that are coming to us that are going to need significant amounts of money, not hundreds of thousands, millions of dollars. And we only have so many resources, and so I've got concerns about putting this kind of a commitment out for our economic development funds, for any funds, simply because I know and others will know, everyone's going to know soon, the massive amounts of money that our community is asking of the city to put into, put into projects like this. And so again, I hope you understand that it's not a no to you or to what Altru is doing. I just, I just can't, knowing all the other things that are coming around, I can't find myself to support this project. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, President Sandy. Mr. Weber, any questions?
Mr. Vingat, go ahead. I have a question here for Kristi Haljiran. Blue Cross and Blue Shield was one of the payers you said that was going to be contributing. Are there others besides Blue Cross and Blue Shield that equally should be supportive of this within the community or that serves the community?
Councilmember, members of the council, there probably are others. I will say that that's something that we would like to have a little more time to explore. I think we went with Blue Cross because they're the biggest and the ones that, you know, we're used to partnering with. Your question brings up a really good point, which is there are lots of other partners that should probably be supporting this. I think because we have such a limited time with our state money, and understandably, they, they've got to get these ARPA funds allocated, we didn't have as much time to go around to, you know, other large employers, other payers, just other institutions to really get their buy-in from the ground up, which is what we would normally do, I think, with any kind of community process like this. So I think that's a good point, and it's not saying that we can't also ask them, but again, I think we're just running into the limited time that we have to move forward.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. As I'm kind of contemplating this entire issue, I usually look when we're doing something significant like this, like what is truly the opportunity before us and what's the necessity to act on the opportunity? What type of problem are we going to actually solve if we also follow through with this? And it seems like we have both of those things relative to the Blue Zones. I think Mr. Sandy talked about the massive amounts of money that need to be spent, and he's absolutely dead on right that those are going to be coming about. But I'm also hearing that for every dollar invested, we're getting three dollars back. And so there's not very many investments that we could have that have that kind of return on it that would help us fund some of those massive projects that he was talking about. For sure, they're there, they need to happen. We have so many things already in place. The roadmap is ready. We hired local. We have national experts. The other thing is, is this is probably one initiative that was a standard area that actually has the potential to impact every citizen, where many of the other types of assistance we give are quite targeted. This really goes across the community. And the last thing I think I want to say is just the problems. We talked about obesity, substance abuse, behavior, diabetes. Those are real issues, and our health is utmost important, and this is an opportunity to address those problems and keep people healthy. So it is an investment, but I think it's an investment in ourselves, and I truly have to support that this is the right thing for the city to do.
Mr. Weber?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Earlier, Ms. Haljiran addressed the issue of that this is possibly something we could just do on our own. And she said, well, we haven't. In fact, not only haven't we, but the issues of obesity, substance abuse, behavioral health, type two diabetes and heart disease, all of these have gotten worse. They're not getting better on their own. We're not succeeding as a community in relation to these. And from a purely economic issue, one of our ongoing budget concerns, both here at the city and for our major employers, is the cost of healthcare. Now, Mr. Vian has just commented on a three to one return on investment. Actually, it's a three to one match that we get to enjoy. The ROI on this is huge. In fact, according to the report, we're talking about possible savings in healthcare alone, not talking about quality of life or all of the other benefits. In healthcare costs alone, two-hundred-and-eighty-three million dollars over the next ten years. That's not three to one, that's at least ten to one. Now, I realize each Blue Zone community is different with goals and processes specifically developed at the local level. And so it isn't possible for us to get an answer to the question, what is this Blue Zones money going to give us? What is going to happen in four years? But I will push back a little bit. Can you give us some idea? I know a lot has been made about the Mediterranean diet. I don't think we're going to start planting olive trees here. We have rich, rich agricultural land, but we're not going to be planting olive trees. But we can grow foods locally to give us the health benefits of that kind of diet. And I'm imagining that some of the things that we could do. Can you give us some other ideas specifically of what a Blue Zones project could do? And then I've got some other comments.
Yeah. Mayor Bochinski, Councilwoman Weber, members of the council, that's a great question. I think there are as many different interventions as we can imagine, as there are communities thinking about food. Thinking about food in particular, one of the things that many of the communities do is have restaurants and grocery stores become what they call Blue Zones certified. That doesn't mean they take all the unhealthy things off the menu necessarily, but just that when you do go out to eat or you are grocery shopping, that it makes it easier to make a healthy choice. So while you're educating your community about what healthy living looks like, you're simultaneously filling your grocery stores with those healthy foods, making it easy, making it easy to go out to a restaurant and pick something that's Blue Zones certified. So that's one thing in terms of food. There's a lot of focus on purpose in life. If you remember, that was one of the Power Nine, is finding that purpose in your life. And so there's a lot in the area of mental health and how we reach out to those who might be isolated, feeling depressed, living alone, facing lots of challenges. And so there are specific interventions that can be done to reach different pockets of people. So there's the mental, there's the built structure. So there's, you know, we've talked a lot about walkability. In the Blue Zones communities around the world, they don't, you know, necessarily have everybody going to the gym every night. It's that movement is a part of their day, and so they make it easy to move. So, you know, the Bike Share program is a perfect example of something that we already have that could encourage people to move more within their day. Am I thinking, do you have any others that you can just throw out as examples?
I'm thinking, well, we already have our tremendous bike trail system, so how do we even leverage that more so that it's used as a part of people's everyday, excuse me, everyday life instead of versus just a recreation thing? Employers, for instance, can do things specific to their work site, encouraging people to take the stairs versus the elevator, encouraging walking meetings, having those connections or MOIs where people are out doing things together to strengthen their sense of purpose, but also create that natural movement.
And Gemma?
Yes, thank you. I didn't know if I should physically raise my hand or what I should do. Thank you. I would say the built environment and the food is definitely a huge component, but like Kristi mentioned, the mental health piece, especially after or even, I guess, during the pandemic, was one of the areas that the Department of Health, Public Health Hotline, Crisis Hotlines, all of the different social services providers, people were crashing from isolation, from, North Dakota has a highly transient, not transient, transplant population, especially in the university communities, the Western communities, where people were just feeling like they didn't have that human support system. So isolation was huge, which we know can lead to poor decision-making, unhealthy habits that are very hard to rewire out of. And so one of the reasons that Blue Zones has worked so well in so many communities compared to just your nutrition and physical activity type strategies is that central part on creating community, like actual community. The way we picture neighbors who know each other, people that have a purpose together, opportunities to connect that specifically center around points around the community. So those are the types of activities and interventions that we were most excited about at the Department in health promotion, because the other two things are pretty easy to engineer. But if group gatherings are still centered around alcohol or are still centered around eating, we do need to make sure that we are encouraging healthier behaviors, but people need to be feeling supported and feeling like they have a purpose in Grand Forks with those people. And that's what gets created. And that creates a sense of ownership in the community that replicates.
Very good. If I may, Mr. Mayor, continue.
Yeah, please. Thanks for those answers all around. We should be proud of the investments in our infrastructure that we've made, and we celebrated those this evening, both in terms of our hard infrastructure and also our quality of life infrastructure. Indeed, Mr. Grasser presented, I think approximately $27.9 million in infrastructure projects for one year. And I think that those were all good projects. But I have to admit, over the years, I've often voted in favor of water pump gears that I didn't fully understand. But it has been millions of dollars in that kind of infrastructure. It's necessary. We also need to invest in our social infrastructure. And when the engineering department tells us that we need that gear for that pump station, I kind of take their expertise and vote in favor. With this, we have the health department telling us that this is a good investment. This is a worthwhile investment. It's odd, when the engineers tell us something, yes, we fall in line, when the health department tells us something, suddenly we're all doctors and we have our own expertise on this. And I think that we should consider what the health department is telling us, both our local health department and our state health department. And we are fortunate that we have resources, as the mayor said, or as Mr. Sandy said earlier tonight, we're lucky as a community that we have these resources that allow us to make these kinds of beneficial investments. However, the money that we're being asked to invest tonight is federal money that came to us specifically for this kind of purpose. This is a rare opportunity. And using those federal dollars, we have the opportunity for a three to one match to invest in our future here. And so we love to tout our collaborative culture in Grand Forks, and it's a good thing. We should celebrate that. There's also times when we have to step forward and provide some leadership. We have the school district, we have county commission, we have other entities, but city council in this community has a special role in leadership. And I think this is one of those times where we really need to demonstrate that leadership and not forego all of those other dollars coming from outside of our community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Mr. Igle.
Thank you, Mayor. My questions are probably more geared towards Janet, the Department of Health, but Kristi might be able to jump in and help as well. This was pitched to five different communities, I believe, five or six. Grand Forks, Fargo, Bismarck, Mandan, West Fargo.
Just four.
Just four, okay. And so those other three communities said, no, we're not interested, but thank you. How much money was appropriated for this concept?
I'll let you take that, Janet.
Okay. So it was four communities. West Fargo was included in the Fargo assessment. So we did four assessments technically, but it did include the West Fargo. Fargo is still in their decision-making and, I mean, full disclosure, Stanford Health and Stanford Health Plan are the two largest healthcare providers and payers for that community and has a different approach to some of the work that they're doing, but they're still working through it. Stanford also has their biggest footprint in Fargo, but is also the largest healthcare provider for Bismarck. They were more interested in looking at Fargo first because they feel they have better foothold and infrastructure in Fargo. So that doesn't mean that Bismarck is off the table, it just means they haven't gotten there. One of the things that is different, though, is that the leadership in Bismarck, the city planners and administrators did request to have Blue Zones consultation to help in their community planning and development and to help with some of their metro activities that they have going on, to provide that health lens and some of the ROI pieces, but also how they can incorporate the proposal that they received into some of their literal built environment planning that's happening now, recognizing that it's more affordable if they can think through it now as they're working on plans for the next decade of Bismarck. And so that is a service that we are also working out so that Bismarck can receive that consultation piece. Different areas in Bismarck did already use parts of the proposals they received to implement what they could on their own, and they are still very much engaged in pursuing a Blue Zones project should the funding be identified. I was provided funding, I was provided a total of $2.5 million in funding, which I divided evenly between both Fargo and Grand Forks as seed money to pay for the first year or so of the Blue Zones projects for them to pilot as part of CDC approval for community development and resiliency that is both health and economic centered.
So the total amount was two and a half million dollars. That's available right now?
The total amount that is available is $2.5 million, and I have indicated that I am in active conversations to see if I can increase what I am able to give to Grand Forks so that we can get to as close as possible to the proposed amount and then work on negotiations. But for right now, I can say 1.5 from that funding.
And when is the, what's the time limit for having to use these funds?
So the fundings have to be completely used by May 31st of 2023. We have to begin allocating, especially for large-scale projects. Actually, a majority of the funding has already been allocated out into contracts or into the projects that were part of the budget proposal that we sent for our ARPA funds. So, sorry, my dog is trying to join me, I apologize. And so I'm kind of one of the last ones that's been holding out, but I am systematically removing funding from one side to the other based on the ability to actually spend those funds by the end date. So I can't say that Grand Forks wouldn't end up with more from me, allowing one of the sponsors to reduce their amount, but I'm not allowed to allocate more than 1.5 to this specific project until Fargo has finished their discussions. And they, I'm not sure where they're going to land, so it's a decision that'll be made over time.
Thank you. I think the one thing I look at is, and I agree with Mr. Sandy, that there's a lot of opportunity with this, and I think it's a great project. But I also understand there's a lot of opportunity through the city of Grand Forks that we need to look at things as well. What I don't want to see is, the city of Grand Forks is at one and a half million, the department is, Department of Health is at two and a half million that they're putting in as I read this, that's correct, right?
From the Department of Health?
Yeah.
1.5 right now. And, but what, Janet, if I may, interpret what you just said, that we would, if certain other projects didn't go forward, she could possibly move some of that to us at a later time? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah. I'm sorry, I must be, I'm on the new sheet, and I must be interpreting that wrong, so my apologies. What I don't want to see is we commit money, Fargo doesn't put, decide to go with this, or another community doesn't decide to go with this, and this money is sitting there, and we're not able to take advantage of that money when nobody else wanted it. And so I don't want to see that happen.
That will not happen. The funding will be allocated. The goal was for it to be to two communities. I have a systematic reduction in funds to Fargo, I'm just going to say it, to Fargo, based on their ability to spend the funds, the longer they take to decide on what they're planning to do or move forward. So any funding that I do unobligate from that side will be moved over to Grand Forks, but I cannot commit that right this second because that community has to be given their due diligence as well. And we have an official must-be expended date of May 31st, 2022, as far as the funds being completely obligated. So that's my timeline to obligate the funds. They have to be completely spent by May 31st, 2023. In order for this project to use up the funds that I have available, we do need to be moving into a period of contracting and moving that project forward. Additionally, the assessment is already a year out, so the further away we get from when the assessment was done, the more kind of catch-up has to be spent in that preliminary period, making sure all of the data is still true, and reorganizing some of the strategies based on things that may have changed during legislative session or, you know, over the course of the past year. So we do want to have that get implemented, you know, kind of as soon as we are able. And I have a goal to have my funds allocated before the end of this month, at least the 1.5 million dollars.
Thank you.
But I should say the other one point, the other $1 million that would be left will not go unspent. If Fargo does choose not to move forward, a portion will be provided for some of that health policy consultation to other communities that requested that, and I will move the remainder to Grand Forks. But I cannot say that today, and I don't want that to be something that people rely on, because I can't say that it will happen.
Thank you. Anything further, Mr. Igle? Oh, Mr. Kavami.
Just a question about the proposed local staff. Who would they be employed by?
So Blue Zones, Councilman Kavami, Blue Zones would actually do the hiring and would employ them, and then Altru Health Foundation would serve as the fiscal agent.
And so any of these, you know, built environment changes that cost money. So how have other cities paid for those changes? And is it just through planning what we're already planning on doing? Or is it, they had other revenue sources? I'm just curious.
Yeah, Councilman Kavami, members of the council, I believe that in some of those other communities, they use some of the cost savings that they got from their health insurance or other ways that they have saved money to reinvest in some of the infrastructure that was needed. I know I said this last time, and I'll just reiterate it, there is nobody that's going to come in and tell us that we have to build something a certain way or widen a certain street or anything. Those will all be decisions that we will make as a community. So I think, you know, ultimately, those decisions are yours as a council. So I certainly won't say that nothing would be proposed that might cost some additional funds, but those would be decisions for you all to make.
Mr. Mayor.
Well, I guess I got, you want to go first, President Sandy?
I really appreciate, I really appreciate that comment, Ms. Halljerran, but if we're going to spend $6.5 million, we shouldn't be telling people we're not going to do what they're recommending, right? And so for people that are thinking about voting on this, you're voting for a lifestyle change for the citizens of Grand Forks, and in my opinion, although they're not going to be telling us we should have smaller roads and that we should have more whatever, I believe that we'd be remiss not to do it because we're paying for that advice. And then when we do that, the side effects of it are, development is going to be more expensive, and we've already got a, an affordable housing problem in our community as it is. And I believe that this will exacerbate that issue. And so, again, I'm, I just, I don't think it's right for our community today.
Thank you, Mr. Sandy. I guess I'd just like to make a couple of comments. I've, you know, kind of sat back and haven't really opined on the subject. It's, I'd say I'm somewhat on the fence on it because I've committed my life to healthy lifestyle and tried to, you know, to pass it on to my children and those around me. My real concern is just the bind from the community. You know, if we've seen anything in the last two years, people don't like being told what to do, especially when someone else thinks they know better than them. And hospitalizations or worse have been on the line the last two years, and people didn't buy into that. So I guess that's my concern, you know, it's $6.7 million that this community's spending, it's a big chunk of change. And I don't know for sure, in my opinion, if city funds, if that's the right route. But I also have that commitment to health and want to see that direction go. So I guess that's, those are my thoughts on it, and, you know, in the end, I don't get to vote, but I thought it'd be prudent to at least share my thoughts on it.
Mayor, I have a question.
I'll go ahead, Mr., okay. Mr. Vien, please.
Oh, okay. I'm trying to figure out what the exact dollar amount that they're asking. I think I heard it's 1.5 million from the city over the four years, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. But what I also heard is that would be the max, depending on what happens to Fargo, monies could be distributed to Grand Forks, but we don't know what that dollar amount is.
Right, Councilmen Vien, members of the council, I think the minimum that Ms. Pester said would be 1.5 million, and then depending on what Fargo and others do, some additional funds could be rerouted back this way.
So in this case, could we make a motion for, would it make sense to make a motion for opt- for up to 1.5 million without putting in an exact dollar amount, knowing that that could be less than the city is contributing?
Yeah, I think that's that's in the arsenal there for sure, Mr. Veen.
Mayor Bocinski, I think if you look at these, I think right now, in the memo that I presented, I cut and pasted what Ms. Aldran had presented. Right now, the two and a half million is assumed as part of the 6.7, and so our 1.5 is there. And so I think if ours was theoretically going to get reduced, I think I think right now that 6.7 is the max the state's going to give, right? And so if our 1.5 is going to get reduced, it's going to have to come from somewhere else likely, you know, other institutional partners, other business donate monies. I think if we're going to do that, I think the motion's fine up to 1.5. But right now, the way the cards are being dealt, I would presume anyone who votes for it, you should presume we're going to spend 1.5 over four years. And just the funding source would be, if you get to that point, would be Fund 2163, which is our city economic development fund, which we do quality of life initiatives and that sort of thing. The other reason why we're going to do we would do that is, as you recall, some of the remaining CARES funding that we had, we did put our 1.5 million dollars into 2163 for advancement opportunities. So that that would be the funding source, if you so move.
Thank you, Mr. Phil. Vice President Mock.
I guess I have some thoughts, but I just want to clarify the actual funding request because when we look at it, it looks to be 1.2 from Blue Cross Blue Shield, 1.5 from Altru and Altru Foundation, 1.5 from the city, and then 2.5 from the Department of Health. So if the Department of Health would fall back to the 1.5, I don't understand where the other million dollars comes from.
Councilman Mock, members of the council, I believe that that number that you're getting is from an email where that was just one draft of how it might be put together. So our hope at that time was that the state might be able to put in more. And the number for Blue Cross, too, I'm hoping could actually be higher than 1.2. So if you look at Altru, the city, and Blue Cross all putting in 1.5, that gets us to 4.5. The state puts in another 1.5. That's we're getting close.
Yeah, it's got sample, Altru Health Foundation sample cost sharing package request.
It's just to get some conversation going about how we might get it get to that 6.7.
All right, further comment?
Well, okay.
Ms. Mock, please continue. Yeah.
Yeah, I guess. So I guess we don't have a final cost share agreement, but we're asked we're being asked to make a decision on a final number. I'm confused.
Councilman Mock, members of the council, so I would I would say that when I talked about the domino effect, that's exactly what it is. So Altru has made their investment. The state is saying right now they can do 1.5 and potentially more. We're hoping that the City of Grand Forks might come in at 1.5. We're going back to Blue Cross after this meeting because they're very interested to see where you all land. And that's how it's going to come together. I think it's it's one at a time, and it's getting everybody to kind of take that step toward making it happen.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Sure. So I'm struggling a little bit because I agree with different pieces. I mean, on the one hand, Mr. Weber, you're very right. We make investments all the time. We make investments in all kinds of infrastructure projects. On the other hand, this is a large scale investment in our public health. And I guess it concerns me a little bit if maybe the mayor hasn't heard more either because I thought by starting this conversation, maybe I would hear more public input one way or the other. And I really got a grand total of three emails. So I don't really know where the community is on this because I'm not hearing a whole lot of buy in. I'm not hearing a lot of you're losing your mind for spending money on this, or this is the best thing I've ever heard of. So I guess I'm kind of uncomfortable with making such an investment when I'm not hearing much from the community. Perhaps we should have thrown some chicken language in there so that we would hear some input because that was really informative, that the community came and told us what they wanted so that we could represent them. Because I'm I'm sort of at a loss of how to represent them well, because on the one hand, yes, the best investment we can make is in ourselves, and I want to believe that and I want to do that. But I also know it doesn't always work if we're not all committed to investing in ourselves and making that commitment. And I'm a little bit concerned because I was making some phone calls and, you know, on the one hand, some communities where this has been successful, they tell you it's been successful, the county was a partner in that. And we're missing the county as a partner in this. And it is, you know, Altru is a regional hospital, and so it's kind of nice to have that regional public health approach because we're all kind of tied together. I'm kind of uncomfortable on the timing, and I do have some questions about Bismarck, I think, because I'm a little uncomfortable with the timing where Altru is with their hospital. I want to make sure that nothing impedes that hospital getting done and the construction being successful, because I think that's very, very important for our community. And we've seen that put on hold once before. So I want to make sure that nothing would take away from that. I'm also concerned about where, you know, we are with COVID and COVID variants that, you know, we've got, I mean, we have direct public health concerns and the things that we're dealing with kind of on a day to day basis. And then now we're talking about an initiative that's going to take a lot of investment. And I'm not sure, you know, we really need the community involved in that if we're going to make that kind of investment. I guess I'm unsure of why we have to make this decision now, but Bismarck has the option of more time or having some of their city staff consult on things that they can do is, I mean, I guess that seems strange to me.
Councilmember Mock, members of the council, I Bismarck doesn't actually have money allocated to them, though I think, or at least not that level of funding, if I'm quoting you correctly, Jana. So the 2.5 that Jana has to set aside is 1.25 in Grand Forks, 1.25 in Fargo. And then Bismarck is using, I don't know exactly what funds, but something different to do some consulting, if if I'm understanding that correctly. You can correct me if I'm wrong.
I can I can share. So Bismarck does not have more time. Because Sanford wanted to do a pilot in a community, they have more of a foothold in first. By the time they would be ready to make a decision about Bismarck, Bismarck would have to do an assessment again. Too much would have changed in their community to be able to use the existing assessment that was done. The consultation services is very specific to that city is in the moment of developing their plan, and they've asked for approximately 15 hours of consultation, which is essentially a day and a half workshop as they're moving through part of their community development plan specifically for physical transportation or active transportation. Sorry, not physical. And so there is not a potential Blue Zones project that'll be occurring with any state match in in the Bismarck Mandan community. And any other funding that I do have is through the Preventive Health and Health Services block grant, which is actually a very small grant that we received to fill gaps in our department for programs we don't have federal funding for. My division's entirely federal-funded. The legislature hasn't quite jumped on board with health promotion for state funds yet. But that's not surprising. So the maximum that we'd be asking from the City of Grand Forks to be able to move this project forward would be 1.5 million dollars. I know that I am committing 1.5 million dollars from the 2.5 I received to do two pilots. Over the course of time, over the next, I don't know how many months are left in this year, six, seven, eight months, I will be removing funding from one side and able to move it over to the other, as long as it's able to be spent by May 31st of 2023. I can't provide more funding that wouldn't be able to be spent by that end date. So honestly, the sooner it gets started, the more money I would likely be able to to allocate. And then that funding, any funding I am able to move over could be reduced then from the city, the city sponsorship towards the project, of course. There is not a request for more than 1.5. And so if we can, or that up to 1.5, I really liked what Ken said, that was a good way to phrase that, so that we can have Blue Cross Blue Shield do the MASH, which is what they're interested in doing. That's why they're interested in what happens tonight. And then I will get to work on, you know, everything I can do to reduce what the city actually ends up paying over the course of the 4.5 years, knowing that in all likelihood, healthcare costs for the city will reduce by a little over a million dollars a year, starting in year three. So that would be exciting. But again, I'm here for any questions.
And I think maybe just to address your question, too, about the community involvement. So we did have lots of good community involvement when we did the assessment. And, you know, over a couple hundred people were interviewed and, you know, we had some great engagement from our community. That was a year ago. And so certainly, you know, it probably hasn't been talked about as much. I think once we make the investment, you know, that's when you really start building that community support. You hire your staff, you start engaging your community in Blue Zones. So it's a little bit of the chicken and the egg. It's hard to kind of rally the community before we know if we're going to do it or not. But I think once we make sign those contracts and move forward, that's when we really start reaching out to our community and getting them involved and teaching them about what it is. And there's just hundreds of volunteers that you use in a project like this that come forward to help drive those initiatives. So it's very, very community focused and very, like I have said before, very much ground up work.
And I appreciate that. I do I did make a few phone calls and was able to connect with a few other folks. And I guess I heard quite a different take on the ongoing investment past the initial investment, that it does take ongoing investment, it does take ongoing staff. So I guess when we say we're hiring five new staff members that are locally hired and locally housed, that seems like an important part. However, and yeah, I don't know if we really talked about this at the last meeting about where they'd be housed. It sounds like Altru would be kind of the house for them and that they're Blue Zones hired. However, you know, when I look at the proposal, I look at a lot of engineering and planning things that would require direct involvement with our city staff and then a lot of involvement with public health. And so again, I'm kind of concerned to not have the county on as partners when we're talking about public health or planning. I'm kind of concerned at not, I guess, I'm concerned to not have them housed within the city. However, I heard from folks that it's an ongoing investment in the years after the initial and that, you know, that when I'm looking at $375,000 a year, I'm looking at that's probably a budgetary increase of about $375,000 that we would be looking at from 2025 going forward. And I'm not sure, you know, if we've thought of how we would budget for that or how we would absorb those costs or if we would make the initial investment and then say that we're not going to do that. I guess, you know, that's maybe concerning as well since we're investing so much.
Thank you, Mr. Weber.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. First of all, the idea that the city's being asked to invest in a lot of different things, we are, and we have been investing in a lot of different things with with great benefit. It's a little bit of a false argument because this is a very specific pot of money that we can draw from, federal dollars that have been put into our 2163 economic development. Also, I think it would, it doesn't behoove us to wait for the county to lead on these kinds of issues. The county is, you know, to some degree in charge of our human services in the community, but it's the city that pays the highest price when we have behavioral health and other issues. And so it's necessary for the city to demonstrate some leadership here. The city's taxpayers generally don't tell us what they are in favor of. They very readily tell us what they're opposed to. But they're looking to us to make leadership decisions. That's our job up here. And actually, if I understand correctly, I was not able to make it to all the meetings. I attended just a couple, but there was a long assessment process, I believe stretching over a year, two years. How long has this been going on? And what does that assessment process tell us about what we can expect about community support for this?
Janet, do you want to take that one?
Sure. Yes, I had to actually engage, I had to get letters of support from members of communities before I was allowed to use any federal funds to do the assessment. So I did receive letters from some of the faith leaders, from Altru, from UND, from our governor's office, and a few other places in order to do the assessment. During the assessment, Grand Forks actually had one of the highest participations throughout the entire assessment week. So there was a full four months of preparation, which engaged stakeholders from multiple organizations, including the city, public health, Altru, UND. There was a few other community members. During the assessment week, those groups that met included some of the higher level individuals that oversee the grocery stores, Altru, again, UND, various areas of UND that would be impacted, especially from their student and employee wellness groups. They participated. They also had some students participate. And then we did have some representation from some of the staff that assist new Americans in their integration into the community. So we actually had really great feedback, and I believe a little, I think around 140 people from Grand Forks that participated in the assessment directly for that week period, and about 40 people that contributed up until then.
Yes, that would really fill council chambers here, and we wouldn't want that during a pandemic.
Right, no.
Yes, good.
No.
I've heard concern about, well, what if we commit this money and then other partners pull out? So I'd like to make the motion that that we approve the Blue Zones project initiative and a 1.5 million dollar funding request contingent upon the state coming up with at least the one and a half million, Altru coming up with their one and a half million, and then Blue Cross Blue Shield seems to me that they stand to benefit as much as anybody on this. If I were an insurance company betting on people being healthy in the future, I would I would want to invest in this. I think they should. So some level of funding from Blue Cross Blue Shield, whether that's 1.2, I think is a number that's been kicked around, or maybe the full 1.5. I'll hold with the 1.2. So my motion is support for the Blue Zones project, the Blue Zones project initiative, a 1.5 million dollar funding request from 2163 contingent upon the state putting up 1.5, Altru putting up 1.5, and Blue Cross Blue Shield putting up at least 1.2. And in that way, we're not left holding the pack.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Do we have a do we have a second on that motion?
I would second the motion.
We got a second for Mr. Veen. I'll open it up to further debate.
All right. Can I follow through with Mr. Weber? I know what I had said, I said up to 1.5, thinking that depending on what happens with discussions with Blue Cross Blue Shield and what more the state might bring, that would be a maximum. And that it may be less than 1.5. I guess that would be my desire. And I was wondering if that was something you were interested in making as a part of your motion.
Mr. Philand, I think indicated that that might be a little bit specious to say up to 1.5 million, but I don't think it really changes the motion much. And Mr. Philand, sorry.
Mayor Bocinski and City Councilmember Weber, I think if
Mayor Pachensky and City Councilmember Weber, I think if I could change anything in your motion, I would do two things. Number one, I would say, I think the up to 1.5 million from the city of Grand Forks from Fund 2163 over four-year period of time. And I would also request that you also, just because we want to have synchronicity, have $1.5 million from Blue Cross Blue Shield and then you would have all four partners at 1.5 and then everyone would be equal. That, that's what I would do if I were trying to make the motion you're trying to make.
Mr. Phelan has twisted my arm once again. I'll make, Mr. Phelan and Mr. Vean, I'll go along with the motion that was just suggested. All right, are you still wishing to second that motion, Mr. Vean?
Yep, yes, I do.
All right, any, any further debate or like to vote? Yes, please, Ms. Mock.
I thought we were trying to get to 6.7. So if it's 1.5 from each, doesn't that leave us at $6 million and 0.7 short?
Councilmember Mock, members of the council, it does, and I think we are hoping that we can negotiate on the rest of it.
Oh, Ms. Pasteur, did you have something else to add?
I was just going to say I can confirm that we can renegotiate the rest of it.
Okay. Thank you. Any further comment? All right, seeing none, we're going to move this to a vote. Ms. Storsted, if you want to do a roll call vote on this one, too, it'd be great.
All right, Weigl.
No.
Dockler?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Mock?
No.
Cavami?
No.
Sandy?
No.
And Vean?
Yes.
I got a set, three, four, three yeses, four noes.
Four noes.
Motion fails. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number two, 4.9.
4.9, city planner and building inspections employment agreements.
Thank you. I think Mr. Brooks is going to, is ready to go and get rolling. I know we did lose one, one member of the planning committee last Thursday out on maternity leave and we're excited to, to fill not that one, but another planning department position that we've been waiting to fill. Ready to get your department in order, so definitely excited on that. We got, do we need a motion on 4.9? Move approval? Got a motion to approve from Mr. Cavami. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Sandy. Any further comment?
Mr. Moschetti.
Yes, Mr. Vean.
Mayor, there's two different motions, is there not, in this one motion?
Mayor Pachensky.
Yeah, I guess we've got Mr. Basfluke's, that, yeah, I guess we put them together because they've been approved with the last one.
The recommendation of the committee of the whole was a 4-3 vote in favor of the agreement for Mr. Brooks and also a 7-0 vote for amending Mr. Basfluke's agreement to provide the six months of severance. So that's the recommendation.
Yeah, I guess we could, if you want to separate and do it.
Could I motion to?
You can approve both. I mean, it's in there as one at this time. I mean, I guess if you don't want to change the motion.
We can start with the first one.
Okay.
So motion.
Just do them separate.
Yeah. So, yeah. So moved.
Which one? Okay, so we're going to separate them. Are you prepared for that, Mr. Sandy?
So not the salary change, just, just approving his contract.
So let's start with the city planner. Is approving the city planner's contract. Let's start with that one. Do we have a motion for that? Okay, and a second. All right, we got a motion for the first half. Any further comment, Ms. Dockler?
The reason I pulled this is just because of that split vote that Mr. Phelan mentioned. It has nothing to do with whether or not I think that Mr. Brooks is the right person for this job because I truly think that he is. It is more about whether it should be a civil position versus a contract.
Thank you. Any further comment? All right, seeing none, we'd be looking for a vote on the first half of that, then to approve the city planner, Mr. Brooks's contract. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
We got, do we have a four, three there?
I believe we had three noes. Is that correct? Weber, Dockler, and Vean? Okay.
All right, that motion carries. And now on extending the, I guess it would be, what's the word I'm looking for? Todd, severance. There you go. Thank you. Mr. Sandy, got a motion to approve to extend the building inspections employment agreement. Do we have a second? Second from Ms. Mock. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Same sign. That part carries unanimously. So same as the committee of the whole. All right, with that, we're going to move on to five information items.
All right, 5.1, statement that changes in cash balance as of July 31st.
Thank you. And then we've got citizen comments. Anybody out there? I believe we had a couple submitted over the weekend, which were attached to emails.
We do have two citizen comments that have been attached to your agenda. That wasn't related to a specific item on the agenda.
Thank you. And seven, approval of minutes and bills?
Oh, sorry, 7.1 is the vendor list and estimate.
As is, thank you. We got a motion as is, a motion to approve. We got a second from Ms. Dockler. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Vendor list and estimate is approved.
And 7.2 is the minutes from July 19th.
As is for Mr. Sandy. We'll take, Ms. Dockler, again, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That 7.2, the minutes from July 19th, carry. Approved. Mr. Phelan, you got any comments tonight?
Could I say four thank yous first? Mayor, you mentioned the Grand Forks Regional Water Treatment. Thanks to our water operators who didn't skip a beat over the summer that the city council didn't have to engage in one day because of that facility. Number two, thank you to the public transportation folks that have stepped up within a day or two notice to provide transportation services. And oftentimes, city bus is the butt of jokes while the joke was on us. They performed a wonderful service on behalf of the community. It's almost heroic, if not heroic, so I'm thankful for that. Number three, Public Works, we started out of the base for both solid waste and, and recycling service out there. And again, another community partnership with the Grand Forks Air Force Base, we asked Public Works to, to do it and they made it happen. Finally, the Lera Center, this, we're going to help support the Lera Center from a staffing perspective throughout September and early October. We have two large concerts and two football games and so our staff will be out there to support that. So four thank yous for city forces that just get to yes and make it happen without us having to get involved in the details. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Phelan, you're going to be taking tickets out there as a way to get into the events for free? You part of that group?
Yeah.
Good to hear. And I do think council should have some further comments on, on something to do for the, the bus department, the way they've stepped up. I don't think anybody's got any time off or anything. I mean, they've been working right around the clock and in different capacities than normal, so I'll highlight that one of the four. Thank you, Mr. Phelan. We'll go to Mayor and Councilmember comments. Mr. Weigl, any comments tonight?
Echo whatever Mr. Phelan said.
Ms. Dockler?
Not tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Weber.
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Mock. Wait, sorry, Mr. Cavami.
No, thank you.
Mr. Vean?
I know we're trying to get through this, but I do have a couple of comments I thought was worth making. I think the issue with the bus department is just indicative, I think, of almost all city employees. When there's really is a need, they step up and they do a great job. So thankful for what the bus department is doing today, but whether it's the water plant, in any of the departments, health department, everybody has stepped up. I think we have just fantastic city employees and I think that means to me identified. And then I was going to say personal thank you to you, Mayor, for going and meeting with Fardel and West Fardels and others on the Red River Valley Water Supply Project. Appreciate much the work that you're trying to do and the involvement that you have. So just those two comments.
Thank you, Mr. Vean. You're going to have to ride with me next time, I think. So we'll, we'll get that arranged. Vice President, Vice President Mock, any comments tonight?
No, but I do appreciate that we were able to help with the busing situation and I think that's really, that was a really good choice. It may be something that we should look at going forward if there's more partnership opportunities or collaboration. We did that with UND and that ended up saving us money. So, you know, maybe that's something we should be looking at studying in the future.
Thank you, Ms. Mock. President Sandy?
Yeah, I was pleased to see how many applicants we got for the position at Public Works. Was it in the 50s? It was a lot. 25. Okay, well, I doubled it, but still, 25 is an amazing number. And I know that there are some internal candidates and externals. I'm looking forward to meeting as many of them as I can and wish them all well. I think if Ms. Bovet were still on the horn, I would ask her to do the salary survey for the municipal judge based upon the same pure cities that we have and provide that information back to at least administration so that they can take a look at it. And perhaps if there's a recommendation to be made, we can talk about it at, at another meeting or next year because certainly I want to make sure the people that are working for our community feel like they're being paid fairly. Otherwise, congratulations, Mayor, on the budget for next year.
Thank you, President Sandy. Really appreciate that. I think we had a great, you know, a lot of good things got moved forward, a lot of debate, positive debate. Budget's passed, second one. So thank you, everybody, for their, their hard work and especially Finance Department, but certainly a team effort. With that, Mr. Gottscheid, we're going to have to move into executive session. I better get my terminology right if I've still got that paper around. So at this time, I'd be requesting a motion to convene executive session. Can I get that motion from a council member? So move from Mr. Weber and second by Mr. Weigl. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. And I guess to be clear, the general topic of the executive session to be discussed, the pending litigation for attorney consultation to advise guidance for the pending litigation of East Central Water District versus the city of Grand Forks, United States District Court case number 320-CV-208. And we have legal authority to do that under North Dakota Century Code 44-04-19.1 and 44-04-19.2 for attorney consultation and the pending litigation. All right, I guess at this point, I would want to clear the room and then I will list who is here. And then once I left, I'll list that before they go off air. So I think it's Mr. Weber done. Yeah, you can just shut it. If he comes back, we'll add it at the end. All right, those, those that are in attendance now, Sherry Lundmark, Maureen Storsted, Todd Phelan, Dan Gottscheid, Al Grasser, and back in our production room, we got Greta Seleski. Yes, that's correct. And councilmembers Danny Weigl, Katie Dockler, Kyle Cavami, Dana Sandy, and myself, Brandon Pachensky.